Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We are grateful to have Father Joseph Jacoby here of the Catholic Church of St. Eugene to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Where everyone please stand.
Let us power heads in prayer. God our Father, Creator and Ruler of the universe, through your Son you gave us a marvelous example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. In every age you call men and women to develop and use their gifts for the good of others. Pour out your blessings upon our city council members, mayor, city manager, and all city leaders and citizens involved in this morning's meeting. Send forth your Holy Spirit upon our leaders, giving them insight to know your will and the courage to accomplish it. In all their decisions may they temper justice with love and be attentive to the cries of those in greatest need. Lord, may everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your saving help. Help us to do the work you have asked and so come to the rewards you have promised. And may the thunder use their talents tonight to the very best of their ability. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Resentance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the meeting to order. We're on item three of the council agenda and first from the office of the mayor, we have an appointment to the Board of Appeals on the building code. All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We're on to item four. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for both June 5th and June 12th. And item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 29th. Any comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. And on to item five. This is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. On pages four and five on the consent docket, under items six D, one and two, six D, one and two, it's firefighting tools, repair parts, supplies and equipment. That needs to be stricken and we'll bring that back at a later date. Again, that's item six D, one and two, on page four and five. And then under unsecured items, on page 18, item eight L, one, item E, 2708 South Klein, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 321 Southeast 20th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 2017 Northeast 21st, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item M, 419 Northwest 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And on page 20, item eight P, the summer block party at the Mary Gardens, we'd ask that that be stricken. Page 20, item eight P.
Okay. Any other requests for uncontested continuances?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
I thought, let me find it, just one second. It's item eight, has to do with the, it's item eight B.
That's a listed continuance, Councilman.
Oh, it's, you got it on here?
It's listed.
Okay, all right. I don't have any.
All right. Then we'll, yes, skip.
On P, did I understand that the, was it stricken or is it, are they counseling the program?
I'm sorry, for the, yes, that event will not take place.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are two items. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Uh huh.
The MFAA has to do with expending some bond money on the Lincoln Golf Course building renovation. There are some companion pieces in here. We authorize a bond issue to pay for it in this particular meeting.
There'll be a presentation on that in a minute.
Okay, because I have a serious question about going forward with the bond issue authorization without having seen the plans and knowing more about what's being proposed out there. And if, I don't know, I think I'd like to not vote on that this morning until the councils had an opportunity to see the plans and have an idea of what kind of a concept is being presented out there.
Okay, this is dispersing the plans back on this particular item. The bond issue is under the PPA and that's item C and there will be a full presentation on that in a minute.
Okay, well, I'll hold my comment then until after that presentation, but I still feel that probably I will ask for that item to be deferred until we have a better understanding of what's being proposed out there at the Lincoln Golf Course. Thank you.
Well, I'm a little confused. Are you saying you want to pull item A out of the MFA?
No, I'll leave it in there.
Okay.
That's a sort of step. Right.
Yeah, I understood that. I was thinking you didn't. Sounds like you do.
I understand.
You put better words in my mouth than I would have spoken myself. So was that a motion on the MFA?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. MFA passed unanimously. Okay, now adjourned OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority and we have three items, including the item that Pat mentioned, and we have, let's see, two or three people here to speak.
I believe Mayor Coats is going to start us out. Former Mayor Coats is here to start us out on this issue.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andy. Andy is a member of the Oklahoma City Golf Commission amongst other things.
Thank you very much. I want to compliment the mayor and the council on doing something I didn't think about doing, which was building barricades so nobody can get to City Hall. It would have significantly shortened the council meetings that I thought of it and I'm very disappointed that I didn't. Good morning and thank you. We have a project that we're all very enthusiastic about and it's near and dear to my heart. And so the chairman allowed me to make a few brief remarks. Building a golf clubhouse at Lincoln Park is truly a wonderful opportunity for the city, for the golf commissioners and for our citizens. It's near and dear to my heart because I spent my formative years at Lincoln Park. I could caddy on Saturday and Sunday and make enough money to pay my green fees to play golf on Monday through Friday when I was 13, 14, 15 years old. I would get on my bicycle and throw my golf clubs on the back and pedal to the golf course. It was a great place. I tell you how long ago it was. UC Ferguson, our iconic golf pro was an assistant, so it was a few years back. Anyway, I think there are maybe three very cogent reasons why this project that we've spent so much time on and means so much to all of us are important. First of all, I think we have the best golf system, public golf course system in America, I believe. I've traveled a lot, I've examined them, I've been on the commission now for a number of years, and I think the golf system is truly remarkable. The golf courses are great. The gateways to our golf courses, the clubhouses aren't. And so I think it's significantly important that we raise the level of our clubhouses to match the level of the golf courses, which is truly extraordinary. I think the second point I would make is this, these become much more than just a golf clubhouse. In our days, it was just for golfers to come in and shower and have a sandwich and play golf. It has now become, as you go travel across the country, these facilities have become community centers. I was recently played a public golf course in Denver and a beautiful lady in a white dress with a groom obviously and white tie came walking in. Their wedding reception was going to be in the room at the golf course. Their beautiful views from up there, the second levels are lovely. They become an essential part of that community. They are great for civic club meetings, they're great for weddings, wedding receptions, family reunions. All those things become part of these facilities that we're talking about. If they are trudely become a significant advancement, a significant addition to the communities that they're located in. Not only do they draw people to come for lunch, but the Rotary Club and the Kiwanis Club and the other civic clubs come there for lunch as well. So they become a significant part of the fabric of the community and thus a very important aspect of it. I know, of course, that you're concerned about the financing and certainly that is something that has, we've struggled with over the years, but the voters did approve $2 million plus in general obligation bonds to start the project. We now propose something on the order of $7 million because it's about a nine-plus-million-dollar project to do it right and to build something that we all would be proud of. I think the beautiful thing about this is that it becomes a user fee, that the people that use it pay for it. People that have functions there, the golfers that come in and out, the people that have family reunions, all those are at a charge and all of them go forward to retire the bonds. So it seems to us that this very important event being capped off by building a facility that is, it's truly extraordinary. I think as you see it, you will understand what a great advance it is for us, not only to support public golf, which is a real asset to our community when you bring people to town to talk about jobs and other functions, showing them the golf courses, that their employees can play at significantly less amounts than probably are justified. And certainly there's plenty of room. When I first got on the commission, I said, "We've got a wonderful product here that is clearly underpriced compared to what they pay in Fort Worth or Denver or Dallas or Tulsa or anywhere else." So there is room to add additional revenue to support these revenue bonds. And so we hope that you will embrace this project and I think go forward with it. I think it will mean a great deal to the city over the years and certainly those of on the golf commission, it's a dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wendell Wittenhunt is up next.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor Coats, and thank you, Councilman and Mayor and Mr. City Manager. This morning I want to share a bit of information with you about this project, starting with the Golf Commission's vision. Their vision is that this clubhouse will be more than for golf. First of all, they do certainly expect that they will be able to host a larger number of tournaments and larger tournaments than they've been able to host. They very much want to improve their food service and the food service to non-golfers as well, and they want to attract non-golfers for traditionally non-golf uses of this Lincoln Park Golf Course clubhouse, such as rentals and as Mayor Coats mentioned, wedding rentals or business rentals or social gatherings. Many golf courses across the country have been successful with that and our commission is convinced that we can be here too as well. A bit of history on the Lincoln Park Golf Course clubhouse, as you can see, Lincoln Park opened in 21, 1921. The current clubhouse was constructed in 1960, additional cart storage in 83. The last major project at the clubhouse was a restaurant remodel in 89. Luckily, golf course, that is, bond funds were approved in '07 that contained money for renovation of both the Early Wine and Lincoln Clubhouses. Bonds were then sold after a contract was awarded for architectural review and programming and design. Bonds were sold in 2012. A lot has been accomplished since then and we'll talk a little bit about that. Back to the '07 bond issue, in that bond issue, $4.5 million was authorized for public golf course clubhouses, more specifically 2.25 at each of Lincoln and Early Wine, again, approved by the voters of the city. The consultant's facility assessment that has now been conducted found that the current facility at Lincoln is in poor condition, quite poor condition. It doesn't meet the current or future business models. It also does not have sufficient space to host larger tournaments that are out there to be had, but we can't host them at Lincoln, not enough room. The Golf Commission's request is that the building be raised rather than renovated, that a new modern structure replace it, that will allow them to host golf tournaments, increase numbers of rentals and retail sales and restaurant activities for both golfers and non-golfers. The demand study that was conducted showed us that 1.8 million golf rounds are available in the metro area annually and only 1.1 million of those golf rounds are being utilized, leaving some 700,000 golf rounds available to attract players too. Told us that tournaments would generate more revenues, no surprise there, and that the increased green fee, sales, cart rentals, restaurant sales and rentals would be new sources of income and increased sources of income, and that the new clubhouse design should recognize that a viable option was the non-golf uses of the golf course clubhouse. And the Golf Commission agreed with this. LWPB architects were hired to do the preliminary designs and you see those depicted before you. They're designed to lengthen the stay at each golf, at each golf stay at the clubhouse for it to be more of a home away from home and as Mayor Coats intimated, a more social setting, a place where people form a community and stay for some time. It is intended to adapt to cultural and economic climates, new economic and cultural climates, and to attract non-golfers as well as enhance the golf experience that would be available to golfers. We're anticipating an estimate of $9.25 million for the project, including all costs. We're anticipating a 3,000 square foot multipurpose space in the building for tournaments and non-golf events and an approximately 32,000 square foot total space availability in the preliminary design. The clubhouse design you see depicted for you includes expanded kitchen facilities, a daily dining room, separate multipurpose room for banquets and rentals, an expanded golf shop, hitting bay, lounge, conference room, administrative offices and room in the upper floor for future expansions. As you can see, it's a very pleasing clubhouse. Also, one of the design parameters that was spoken of a lot in the Golf Commission meetings and with the consultant is that there needs to be a visual connection between the clubhouse and the course itself. That is one of the goals that this preliminary design succeeds at, certainly the view of the course is much emphasized, that it should support an expanded lunch market for both golfers and non-golfers, expand corporate and other large tournaments and have wedding and other types of business rentals. Before you see the construction schedule, would commence in fall of '12 with bid construction of a temporary clubhouse that would be used later, would not be removed, but would be used later as a driving range building, culminating in construction, a new house, that is clubhouse being completed in the summer of 2014. The funding for this project at approximately estimated to be 9.25 million is shown on this pie chart at approximately 7 million from revenue, new bonds and the 2.25 million GO bonds that are already associated with this project in the bond issue. There has already been a $2 per round fee increase that will help cover the cost of this bond issue indebtedness and Mr. Soodle, Assistant Director of Finance Department, will speak more about the bond issue requirements in a few moments. You have before you hear the green fee schedule, the current green fee of $23.50 increased recently and another increase that is slated for April of 2013 at $1.50, making the fee as of April of '13, $25. I also have included some other metro golf course cost, green fee costs for the right of that figure. And on the second line, I have included the 18 whole weekend fees at both our courses and the other courses, and three other courses in the metro. And with that, we will move into the discussion of the bond issue required, the revenue bond issue required to complete this project, and Mr. Soodle of the Finance Department will speak with you about that and then we'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here this morning, Kenton Soodle, Assistant Finance Director, just to give you a little bit more information about the proposed bond issue that's on the docket today for your approval. These would be 25-year bonds. We estimate that the debt service annually would be about $460,000. Do you want to piggyback on what Mr. Wittenhunt was talking about, the fees, that we believe this bond issue will be paid for by the fee increase? In fact, the first fee increase that went into effect on April 2nd of this year, we believe that that fee increase on an annual basis will be sufficient to service these bonds. The second fee increase that would go into effect April of next year would just provide additional cushion for operating expenses, et cetera, future inflation.
So may I ask a quick question as long as we're going over that? That was kind of the comment I wanted to make earlier. Have we taken a hard look at debt service and are you suggesting that this current fee increase is a one-to-one match and that that additional $1.50 would, I mean, ultimately the city is putting its faith and credit behind this bond issue and so I was just curious.
Yes. The debt service we're estimating at $460,000 annually for this bond issue. I believe the fee increase, if rounds stay the same as they did in 2011, and they're actually ahead of that pace right now, that fee increase would raise about $520,000. So just the fee increase that's in place now would actually have a little bit of cushion in it for this debt service. The second fee increase would provide additional cushion. We believe it probably will generate another $400,000 on top of that.
But that's a great question because we're not taking the performance of the building into the repayment of the debt. We're taking a very conservative approach here and taking a look at the rate increase to offset the debt. We believe that there will be increased revenue that will come with the building, but we will be able to experience that and then make decisions as we go forward as far as future decisions for the Golf Commission.
And I'm a teeny bit confused about the amount we're talking about. The pie chart shows 7 million plus 2.25. The memos all say 8 million.
Great question. The resolutions before you set the parameters of the sale because we don't know what the market will be. The actual bond issue will probably be somewhere around 7.5, 7.6 million because we're going to have to get 7 million for the project fund, about a half million for a reserve fund and then, you know, a little bit of money for cost of issuance. So the actual, when you see the size of the bond issue will probably be 7.6 if I'm guessing today. However, we build a little bit of room in there when we come to you and ask you for permission to do the bond issue in case there's any market movements that would cause that amount to go up or down. I anticipate 7.6 is probably where we land and that nets us 7 million for the project.
And that $460,000 in debt service is for the full 7.6?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Can I, so it's for, it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the GO bond, 2.25 million, it's just the revenue bond?
Correct.
The 2.5 million will be used, or 2.25 million will be used in the project and this revenue bond will supplement that.
Right.
The $460,000 of debt service is just for the revenue bonds?
Correct.
And assumes an interest rate of about?
It all depends on, we're due to get our rating today. I expect a double A rating on this and at the current market, I'm thinking it will be less than 4%, which is just an outstanding rate for 25-year bonds. That still may be a little bit conservative, but I expect somewhere probably in the 3.75, 3.50 range. But again, that won't be determined until we sell the bonds. And right now, the plan is to do that bond sale next week with closing in July, so funds will be available in mid-July to be in the project, be in the work on the project. I did want to point out one other point on the financing is that as part of this, the city, as you alluded to, will be giving a support agreement with your approval today and that's also known in the bond world as a moral obligation. So I have a couple slides, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit to make sure you're informed about exactly what that is. What this agreement of support is, is basically, the way it works is there'll be a debt service reserve fund I mentioned earlier set up, that's essentially equal to the maximum debt service, so approximately $460,000 would be set aside in an account that is there for security for bondholders, that makes these bonds more marketable, and it's there that in the event the system could not pay their debt, that it could be drawn upon. What the city agrees to do with the agreement of support is if that's ever drawn upon, the city agrees to replenish that reserve fund if necessary. This is a year-to-year promise, you know, by state law we can't obligate future councils and it's something that will need to be renewed annually. So the nuance of that is basically if something were to happen to the system today and it was completely unable to pay its bonds ever again, bondholders would not have a legal recourse against the city beyond the one year. However, the city is making a promise that annually they will approve this agreement of support. And you'll see an item on the first docket of every July that renews this agreement of support.
Yeah, let's talk about that just for a second, the philosophy behind that because, you know, do you want to do that or not? The fact of the matter is that, one, is this was conservatively put together. It's put together backed by the rate increase only, so we think it's pretty fiscally sound to do that. But secondly, most likely, the city isn't going to let those bonds default anyway. If something were to happen in the owner of the vault situation, the city would most likely step in because we would want defaulted bonds on it. So we might as well put up the moral obligation portion of it and take credit for that and get a lower interest rate as we go forward. So that was kind of the thought process as we went forward.
Is there other bond indebtedness currently related to the golf system?
Yes, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, and that is one of the points if you'll go to the next slide. Obviously, better bond rating, lower interest rate, and we did want to point out, the city does already have a moral obligation or an agreement of support in place for the current bonds that are outstanding for the golf system. As you'll see on the next slide, the golf system currently has about eight, it's 7.9, but about $8 million of debt currently that we did a refunding, we refunded this debt back in 2010, I believe. The new bonds will raise the debt amount to approximately 15- The new bonds will raise the debt amount to approximately 15.6, and as part of the bond issuance that the golf system has done, they've made a covenant to maintain a 1.1 coverage ratio. Just to give a little more information about that, essentially, that's taken the gross revenues of the system, you subtract out the operating expenses, whatever's left over, they're making a promise that they'll have at least 1.1 times their total debt service. So, in essence, it's a promise to keep about 10% more generated in revenue each year than you need for your debt. And obviously, as with any debt, if inflation were to outpace revenue growth, you know, you always have to take a look at, there could potentially be additional revenues needed. But the golf system monitors those finances, they look at that every year, and they've had a history of implementing rate increases or other revenue enhancements when needed to maintain their coverage. One point that goes along with that was just to say, you know, Mr. Wizenhut mentioned that there's G O. bond project also approved for Early Wine, so any future bond issue that we would need to do, revenue bonds, would probably need additional revenues. Just wanted to make that point today, that, you know, we're building this to service the debt for Lincoln, and what's currently outstanding. And just a couple of considerations that we need to remain cognizant of is that, you know, the larger, much larger facility, at some point in the future, would probably require increased future capital maintenance, and the golf system's already begun having discussions and talking about those future needs, and analyzing those requirements. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have for Wendell or I.
Let me ask a question.
Your Honor.
The assets of the golf system, are they owned by the P P A. or the Parks Department?
The Parks Department's the city, and so, they're ultimately owned by the city, but they're leased back to the P P A.
Okay. So, who owns the real estate that's in the golf system?
City.
Okay. And then, so the P P A. operates?
There's a lease between the city and the P P A.
Okay.
Yes, actually, part of the resolution, when you, if you approve the revenue bonds, extends the lease to the end of the life of the new bonds.
Okay. So, the city owns a number of golf-related assets?
Yes.
That are not really a part of this? I mean, we didn't put up the property, the real estate?
No, that's, that's not, there are others, the same, we have the same similar relationship with some of the lands in the Water Department, that, in the Water Trust, so that's not, yeah, that's.
But that's a separate trust, right? Is that a similar relationship?
Well, but the P P A.'s a separate trust, too.
Okay, I guess I didn't know then, that, so you're saying that the Water Trust doesn't own the real estate involved with the Water Department?
Most of it is, it's not a uniform statement, but a lot of that land is owned by the city and leased back to the Water Trust.
I see.
Not all of it.
Okay. Pat, you want to say something?
Yeah, first of all, I want to make it clear, I have, I think Lincoln Clubhouse needs to be remodeled, or rebuilt, whatever the right decision is. I can't make that decision. I have no problem with the financial analysis, it looks like it makes sense, and they can pay for it. My concern is, what role, legitimate role, does the city have in providing event facilities? If we build this thing so that we can have marriages there, will the marriage rate go up, or will it go down? I doubt it seriously. There are places in Oklahoma City where civic clubs can meet, there are places in the city where they can have weddings, and I'm not sure the city has a role to play in providing a service that is currently being provided by the, of the private sector, excuse me. If somebody could convince me that there was a shortage of those facilities, that puts it in a slightly different line on it. But my concern is, we're going into an area that government doesn't really need to go in. Now, you can make a comment that the golf courses themselves, or that there's an economic development aspect to that, that I'll buy into, we can attract people to come here because of the golf courses, that's fine. But I, as bad as Lincoln Clubhouse needs to be redone, and I don't argue with that point at all, I think we may be going too far by building an event center out there to encourage weddings and civic club meetings to be held at. That's all I presume, Your Honor.
David?
Pat, I look at that as just a supplemental use, that is not the main use. The Lincoln Golf Course is the flagship of golf courses in Oklahoma City, and it long time has been. We need to improve the clubhouse to attract more tournaments, and to improve or increase the usage from just a golf facility. If there are available times that the facility could be utilized for other unrelated use beyond golf, well, they're providing for it. I think it is a good opportunity. I can't speak as well for Lincoln as I can for Early Wine, but certainly, Early Wine could certainly be used in addition to just a golf facility, as a community event center. And again, the main focus is from a golfing perspective, and I see the opportunities only growing as our MAPS 3 projects come online, there'll be more opportunity to attract people from throughout the state to activities here in Oklahoma City. We could work in conjunction with those events, the golf courses could, to promote tournaments, activities at the golf courses that coincide with those events. I think it's certainly needed, and if you would just go out to the Lincoln Clubhouse, it is, it's an embarrassment. That's the only way to say it, is it's an embarrassment.
David, I have to interrupt you, but I want to make one point clear. I have no argument with improving the Lincoln Golf Course House, that they're out there. It desperately needs that. That's not my argument at all. My argument goes to the, not argument, my concern goes to the fact that we stepping into an area that traditionally, and currently, is being done by the private sector. I know we have, we got this facility, we ought to use it and get as much revenue as we can, but has anybody in the golf world in Oklahoma City ever planned a wedding reception?
Pat?
Have they ever had a, no, I'm serious. We're getting into an area that we have no expertise in, and I question whether we have a legitimate role to play in this area. And I say, I read out Lincoln when I was a golfer, it's a beautiful course, and it needs a beautiful clubhouse. I have no argument with that at all. But this concept of paying for part of this project by having an event center out there, just seems to me a extension of government interference in the private sector.
Okay. Larry?
I would tend to agree with you, Pat, as far as the wedding reception, et cetera, and I wish, quite frankly, that maybe that had not been put on the table, but it has been. But however, I think there's a more root situation out here, and I'll use the first tee tournament as an example. They just had 36 holes of golf for the first tee tournament to raise funds for our first tee program. Whether you like it or not, after a round of golf, and most tournaments, and before a round of golf in these tournaments, the participants like to have lunch, and they'd like to have dinner. There is something a little bit embarrassing about having executives and key people in the community sitting in a golf barn, eating your lunch and eating your dinner. And the event center portion of the thing to support tournaments, I think is a key element of this, and we are in competition, quite frankly, with semi-private courses all around town, who advertise ambiances for the beginning and the end of their tournaments, and we're losing, I believe if the Golf Commission would come forward, I think they would testify to this, we're losing valuable revenue generating tournaments to semi-private courses around town, and this will close that gap and allow Steve Carson at Lincoln to compete aggressively with some of those courses. And I won't name them, but there's an ad on TV all through the, all through the open, about the coming to this particular course, and one of the key things of that course was coming to have a hamburger and a Coke afterwards, in a place, and we can't have that for more than one or two people in our current clubhouse, we can't have it for a full tournament. So, that, I think, is the key essence of this, not the wedding events, and I agree with you on the wedding events portion.
Well, you used a key term, we're competing with semi-private entities. I don't think the city has any business competing with any private entity. I think that's beyond our scope. I have no problem with them building a dining facility big enough for a golf tournament, I think that's wonderful. We are competing with the private sector there, but maybe that makes sense, given the fact that we use these as an economic development tool, and this may be important to that fact. But I think when we begin to talk about event centers, about functions, other than functions specifically aligned and related to golf activities, I think we're on thin ice as a government entity. And I say, they can build whatever kind of building they like out there, I think they desperately need it, it's a beautiful golf course, it needs a beautiful clubhouse, and if they need a bigger building to handle tournaments in it, that's another issue. But I don't think we ought to talk about event centers, about weddings and civic clubs out there, as being part of the mechanism that we put in place to recover the revenue for the golf course.
Gary, and then Ed.
Well, I agree with Larry, and we've kind of gotten off track here, in my opinion. The space that you're talking about to hold events in, that space is needed for golf tournaments. The clubhouse needs that space to hold the kind of tournaments that they want to hold, that other places can hold because of the amenities they have. The fact that that space is there and needed for the golf tournaments, I don't know why we should not understand that if they can find a renter for it, for whatever might happen out there, it's just additional revenue for the golf course. But you need that space for, to hold the kind of amenities with golf tournaments that everybody else is able to hold. Our Golf Commission has done a fantastic job of keeping the golf courses in the level of quality that's bar, is equal to, if not better than, most of the pay-for-plays and the privates around Oklahoma City. So, the golfing experiences there, what is not there is the amenities that go along with it, that you get in those other areas. If we can provide the full service, not only the clubhouse and the amenities that go with it, along with the excellent golf courses we have now, for the green fees, even with the increase that we're going to have, you're going to have a level of service that's the best anywhere. You can't go to pay-for-plays or privates with that kind of a green fee cost, and get the kind of amenities that we're going to be able to supply here. So, I'm like Larry, I wish we hadn't bannered about so much that the wedding receptions and all that are an integral part of all of this, but the fact remains, we're going to have that space available, because you need it for golf tournaments, and yes, they should be able to use it for a revenue stream when it's not being used for a golf tournament. But I think we need to focus on what we're providing for the golfing community out there in a level of service and quality and price range that's going to make it an excellent source moving forward.
Okay. Ed?
I want to make this point again and again and again. I have no problem with doing anything out there to improve conditions for golfers, and people are suggesting maybe that I'm against that. I am not. But I think that the concept, the discussion, that indicates it may be used for other things concerns me. As far as a golfing facility, if we have to build, you know, a 1,000-seat arena out there to handle tournaments, that's a different thing. But I think the minute we start talking about using that facility as a mechanism to compete with the private sector, we're going too far.
All right. Ed?
Well, Jim, do you have a sense of, with our involvement, how much we can push down the interest rate? I mean, what's the difference if we are or are not involved?
Well, we have to be involved. Without us, the.
I mean, without the guarantees?
Without the moral obligation?
Yeah.
I believe it's a difference, in speaking with our financial advisor, probably between being double A rated and B double A, which is in today's markets, probably a percent and a half or more difference, which would mean around 2 to 2.5 million dollars more interest you would pay over the life of these bonds.
Yeah, Skip?
Yes. First of all, I would like to thank the Golf Commission for the fantastic work and the amount of time that they have devoted towards trying to come up with a financial equation, and also the architectural design that would, in their opinion, meet the area, the geographics of the area, and at the same time, you know, understand that, as stated earlier, that the use of this facility itself will ultimately pay for the total cost of it. And I've been in several of the meetings from the beginning in reference to this project, and I was very impressed with the way that the Golf Commission looked at Early Wine and looked at Lincoln, and understood that even though that the bonds that had been set for funding for Early Wine and funding for Lincoln, that in the end, they looked at the one that had the worst conditions, and realized that we should put one of these aside and focus our energy and our time towards the development of a project that really would enhance the overall growth and development of Lincoln Golf Course, and based upon the number of tournaments that they have clearly tracked in reference to the numbers, the rounds that has been played over the years, we at least have a track record that you can stand on and realize that, you know, this is a project that has taken care of and has sustained itself. And I think we all find ourselves in growing times, and in different times, and when nothing remains to say. And in all due respect to Councilman Ryan, I hope that this didn't get taken in the wrong direction as it relates to the use of some of the facility, but I think the totality of the facility itself, from the beginning, and every conversation that I had with the Golf Commission in their meetings, was strictly for providing the services and the conveniences for a growing golf community, and that the growth of the rounds at Lincoln Park, and the number of tournaments they would be able to bring into Lincoln Park, would satisfy those tournaments, and give people a wonderful experience at Lincoln Park. And so, when the facility is not being used, as Councilman Mars and Councilman McAtee expressed, that's the only time that I understood that the facility could be used for an alternative purpose, not to take the golf course and, take the golf club, and then say, well, we're having a golf tournament, but we also need space in order to have a particular special event. So, I think that everything that I was given in reference to information in the conversations was that, in the event that there is a slow time, or in the winter, where you have a facility that's just been, that's just setting, and you have an opportunity to use it for another particular purpose, it's paying for itself. In other words, we're not giving the space to anyone to just come in and use the facility, because we're paying for it as a city. And so, that's kind of what my position is, and I really think that the Golf Commission has done a yeoman's job in reference to their leadership, and in reference to trying to work the numbers that they thought would be, you know, fiscal, and developing a project that will last for years to come, and as you can see, the number of years that we've had to endure with the conditions of Lincoln as it stands today, this clearly would give us a long tenure of a better project at the Lincoln Golf Course, so I support it.
I'd like to see us vote. How about a motion?
Some voters.
Okay. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Well, adjourn the O C. P P A., and convene the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, there are three items. Comments or questions on the E A T.? All right, pass your votes. Pass unanimously. Well, adjourn the O C. E A T., reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
J., A Q., and A U.
I missed that.
J. A Q., A U.
A Q. and A U. All right. And A. from Pat.
And here, 6 W. and 6 A L.
Larry?
B.
Okay. All right, Ed, you want to get started with J.?
J., I just wanted to know if this is complete replacement of all of our defibrillators, or how many defibrillators we're talking about, and I think Chief Bryant's working on that, so I don't, I can wait.
I can't answer that, but I'll bet you he'll come in and answer that for us.
Okay. AQ is an IMSA-related item?
Yes, it's our budget or our agreement.
Our agreement on the utility bill. In the background discussion, it indicates that this agreement clarifies the city's intent to ensure its citizens that capital such as equipment and ambulances purchased with these funds will be owned by the city. And that seems inconsistent with our discussion maybe six months ago, that the ambulances would be owned by IMSA. I'm a little, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I thought that was the direction we got from council, was to make sure that the capital was in the city's name, and so this is an attempt to do that. We think we're following the direction the council gave us during the window of opportunity.
But it is a change from what we discussed previously, so that-
Yes.
The ambulances will-
Well, this is the discussion we had during the window of opportunity.
Right. So previously, the ambulances have been owned by the city, and basically, we're going to continue to do that?
Well, there was a period of time where they weren't. They were, and then they weren't, and now they're going to be again.
Perfect.
Okay.
And, okay.
A.
And the Revenue Stabilization Fund again, that's only, can you explain that? That's just to, some of the utility bill will go to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, and that's just for administrative costs?
No, rate stabilization is so that we collect money, and then as costs go up, we will defer future rate increases.
Okay.
That's correct. Councilman Doug Dowler, Budget Director. The Revenue Stabilization Fund, so we can keep that 365 per month be the same. In fact, in this coming year, we'll be using some of that Revenue Stabilization Fund to help pay for our cost with IMSA. So our costs are actually going to be a little bit higher than what we're bringing in on the 365 a month fee because of that. Then the Revenue Stabilization Fund is what's making up the difference.
How much money are we talking about?
I'd have to go look. I want to say it's a few hundred thousand dollars, but I don't remember the exact number. I can get that for you, though.
And when we set that up, that was the intent?
That was the intent when we set the thing up, was that the excess revenue in the early year would keep us from having to raise the rate in the out-year and later year.
And so we're now diverting some of that excess revenue?
Right.
To keep the rate at-
At 365. It's likely in another year or so, we'll have to be looking at potentially increasing that rate, but we don't have to now because we had the Revenue Stabilization Fund.
How much in excess funds do we have?
It's a little over a million dollars right now, is what we're expecting at year end here.
And so we're going to spend a few hundred thousand?
Right.
What's a few hundred thousand?
Again, I can pull it up in the budget book if you want to wait a few minutes, but I don't have that off the top of my head.
But we'll go through that million dollars in a couple of years?
Right. By next year, the amount that we'll need will exceed what's left over, so we'll have to look at raising the rates next year.
Okay.
Chief Bryant's here.
For the upcoming fiscal year, Councilmen will be replacing 15 of the Life PAC 15s and 50 of the Life PAC 1000s.
Okay, 50, okay.
So the difference between the two is the semi-automatic between automatic or fully manual.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor, while we're talking about IMSA-
Yeah, Pat.
We have coming up our opt-out period, I think it's September, and in conjunction with that, I think we ought to make a real effort to communicate to our citizens exactly what that covers. There was some confusion in Tulsa. Some people thought they had bought ambulance insurance and they'd bought gap insurance, essentially. I think we need to make that very, very clear as we go forward to avoid the kind of issues that came up in Tulsa.
Okay. Ed, you want to keep going with AQ?
Well, I wanted to, AU?
Okay, I thought you had AQ and AU.
He didn't. Right, AQ was the IMSA, and I think I understand that. AU is the Occupational Health Clinic, and we're going to spend about $260,000 to renew a contract with St. Anthony's. My question is, what is the length of this contract? I assume this is a little over $20,000 a month. That includes the lease, the equipment supplies, nursing clerical support. How long is the, how long is this obligation?
It would be four, three-year contract.
Okay. All right, just, this is a good, could be a good chunk towards the primary care clinic, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too long.
No, it's just a three-year, and of course, the Occupational Health Clinic, it will be totally separate from the primary care clinic if we were to open one.
You couldn't incorporate the two to save overhead?
Well, we could, and we've explored that, but I'm not necessarily in favor of combining the two.
Okay.
One has to do with maybe its pre-employment, maybe job injury kinds of situations, and the other one is something totally different, and so I really would not be in favor of combining the two.
Thank you.
J? Pat, item A.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a sort of a, like I said, I got my grumpy suit on this morning, but we're buying two electric cars for the city's use, which I think is commendable environmentally sounds, hopefully. But we're paying $340 extra to put in carpeted floor mats. And it seems like if that's going to be a work car, there'd be a lot of opportunities for people to get in with muddy feet, and not having carpeted floor mats as opposed to having rubber floor mats seems to be counterproductive. It's a small amount of money, but that's how our federal government got $15 trillion in debt, by ignoring small amounts.
I'd be happy to look into that issue.
Okay, thank you. And I've got the floor. Your Honor, can I ask one other question, please, on item V? I had this in my, that was mine. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, but my question is, the, it's a housing demand study, and we already have that supply, and this is a supplement, to conduct a visual preference analysis to the home housing demand study. What is a visual preference analysis and how it looks? Is that what we're talking about?
Visual preference analysis was a project that was funded previously. We have a federal grant to do that as part of our OKC plan, and we had a contractor that was doing that analysis for us. He did not perform, so we canceled his contract, and we're adding the remainder of his scope of services to this particular contract.
But what does a visual preference analysis show?
Councilman, it's intended to basically get an indication from the community on a statistically significant way of what their visual preference is for different parts of the community, whether it be housing or the commercial sector or the streetscape, et cetera, is to get an understanding of how they would like the city to look, given, given our druthers as to what we could provide. So just get an indication of where we want to take the city in terms of the-
No, how the city looks, it's a visual preference kind of thing, so-
Correct.
I'm not sure that that's worthwhile, but the money's there, so let's spend it.
Thank you.
Russell. Because I had that marked also. Well, just because what somebody else wants to look at our city and determine what it should look like, could we have the same service provided from our in-house staff as it relates to what we already have and the continuation of infill projects to bill in reference to the housing? Because this is all about housing, or is this just our building?
No, this is actually added to the housing contract because they have that capacity. They will be looking at housing, but they'll be looking beyond that as well. So they'll be looking at other aspects of the community's appearance.
And this is for a year, or is it-
Until the, we expect to have it completed towards the end of the year. They will not be going out and doing, I don't know when they'll go out and do the visual preference, it'll probably be in the fall, I would assume.
Okay.
I'm not sure we'll be, I'm not sure we'll be showing the competing images on that front, but.
That's what we don't want. We're going to-
It's informative to the way that the plan is constructed and then ordinances that are crafted in response to the plan, so to get an understanding of where they would like the city to go.
Mayor.
Yes, Skip?
Then just on the follow-up on W, because sometimes it just seems like that when they have all these consultants running around in different directions and it's all about the same issue, and on W, design services agreement with crafting associates to provide pro bono, well, at least we're not paying for that one, right?
That's the one I wanted to talk about, and Russell, I hope you would share that. This is really a neat story, and it's a young man that went through our Neighborhood Services leadership training and identified that we had some issues, and went to his firm and asked if they would be willing to provide some pro bono services for us in that regard. And reading the memo, it indicates this is really the first private partnership that we've generated along with the Neighborhood Services, the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative that we're working on. And if you'd add to that, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, and this is exactly what we intended to do, and there are a couple of people here from Crafton Toll today. We're very appreciative of this offer because it's going to help enormously in enabling each of these neighborhoods to determine what do they want regarding infill? How do they want that to look? And how will it blend with what they already have in the neighborhood? So this is a great service and is going to help enormously in adding to what we can do. And it's really what we were hoping that the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative would do would be to leverage that additional support. So this is one. There are several others that we and Neighborhood Alliance are talking to as well. So people are interested in assisting because they're excited about the prospects of SNI.
Great. Well, I really would like to express my thanks as well to the Crafton Toll folks for being here today and for offering these kinds of services. We don't do these things well without public-private partnerships, and so I thought it was a really exciting initiative. Thank you very much.
Except usually the public-private partnerships, there's money involved in which we're paying out or, but, you know, I just think that if we get these type of engagements, then, you know, there's the possibility of us reaching out to the universities that are within the proximity of this city and extending the offer to those students who are in urban planning as far as intern programs and give them the opportunities to come in with projects and ideas that they can submit. And I think it just makes it more of a healthier engagement of our young people in reference to their education and maybe give them even a reason to stay here in Oklahoma as participating with what they have been able to offer as far as their dreams and their visions of the city of Oklahoma City. I just think that we have a wealth of talent and intellect that's right here that we keep going outside, finding these consultants to come in and march around our city for a few months and then tell us, you know, what it should look like.
Well, they're only, they're actually gathering the opinion of the community, so it's a survey. They're not imposing their view on what the city should look like. In this case, this is gathering the opinion of the community.
Okay. Meg, you want to continue on W or move to AL?
I think I finished on W, and I would just move on to AL. And I really just wanted to point out that this is sort of a creative, another way that the city's using creative financing ways to do some repairs. Our fire station number one needs to have some HVAC repairs done, and to find those budget dollars, we kind of reached back to a trail of fire stations going back to 1910. That fire station was closed and moved to the Walnut Bridge and operated there for many years. It was sold to Urban Renewal. It became the detox facility. We sold our detox facility, and we put that money in reserve, and we now have the money to use to do the repairs on our new fire station number one. So it's just an interesting way to point out, I think, how talented our staff is at figuring out ways to recycle dollars.
I look at it as more, we're really compliant with the IRS regulations and following and making sure we're using the proper, properly using those funds.
Well, it was an interesting train of, you know, watching how that all worked, and I just wanted to compliment the staff for taking that approach.
Okay.
IRS thanks you, too.
Larry, item D.
Thank you, Your Honor. Russell, if you would, please, sir. Back to the visual preference analysis. See if I, thank you for your previous comments, because I think you've clarified some, but if I understand correctly, we had a contract out with another company at some time that was supposed to do this type of study, and that did not get done?
That's correct.
Okay, and so this is not, something that's not new. This visual preference analysis, they're going to go out and survey our residents and ask them questions about what they visualize, what they would like to see the city look like into the future, which will help plan and the other?
That's correct. We don't know how to get there if we don't know where we're going, so this is really the intent of the visual preference, is to get an understanding of what people would want the city to look like, and then we can respond to that by crafting policies and ordinance that will get us in that direction.
And this is what our people want it to look like?
It's what our people-
Not with somebody in-
Not what anybody else, this is a purely objective survey of the community to understand what they want the community to look like.
And then, so this is an integral requirement, really, to get us where we want to go? This is just not some frill that we're adding on?
No, it is not a frill. It's an essential planning tool. It's used very widely. We haven't done it here before on any significant scale. You know, we might do it at a neighborhood planning level, but we haven't done it on a community-wide level. You know, we've heard a lot of issues brought up during Planning Commission and City Council about the way things look, whether that be signs or the streetscape or the appearance of neighborhoods. This is a way to articulate that in an objective way and be able to respond to it objectively.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Is it possible that the consultant could have a one-on-one conversation or meeting with each one of the council members who represent a particular quadrant of this city? I mean, is, can we have that opportunity?
I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Because I do have some real serious issues in reference to parts of the city that I represent when it comes down to these surveys, because so many of my citizens tell me that they've never, never got a telephone call, got a piece of mail in reference to the survey that we keep reporting that what the citizens say. And, you know, maybe with the council person and engaging maybe a town hall meeting in those particular wards would give people a little bit more transparency in reference to their input.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. We really appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one more question on AM? I just want to clarify, this is surplus funds on the 2,000 GO bond? We had extra funds, and so we're going to divert, it's about $850,000. We're going to divert that $850,000 to street resurfacing.
To various projects where we're short of funds to complete, that's right.
Okay. So are these new street resurfacing, or this is just where you're short?
Eric, are these listed projects?
The majority of these, the majority of these projects are actually unlisted projects that we're using those unlisted funds for, so we've kept an active list of projects in need, and so as those projects come up in the queue, we're able to apply these funds. Majority of these, though, that you'll find, these are all, some of these are 80/20 projects, meaning that they're ODOT or ACOG tip projects. We're receiving some partial funds, and so this allows us to just apply 20% value and get an 80% on the other side. And I would say there's several of these that are in that category.
Like May Avenue from 36th to 63rd, is that?
Which item is that? I'm looking real carefully.
Two, AM two.
Yeah, it's, that's, again, that's one of those 80/20 projects. It's, I don't believe it's a listed project. It's one that's on a list that we're able to apply for and seek funds and obtain, so no.
Okay, thanks. All right. All right, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket, five items. Comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, and these are items that require a separate vote. We'll begin with a series of zoning cases. Item eight, A1 is an ABC issue in Ward eight. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant here? I guess not. Any rate, this was considered by the Planning Commission, passed unanimously. It's an area of a lot of restaurants in that particular, adjacent to the Perpatrik Turnpike and Memorial Road. It's a 3.2 beer sales situation. I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask for the emergency on that one as well, please.
We have a second on the emergency. All right, cast your votes, and the emergency passes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item eight, A2 is a request to accept an easement. It's in Ward three. Larry, you okay with this? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Cast your votes on item eight, A2. Passed unanimously. Item eight- Item eight A3 has been deferred until July 3rd. Item eight A4 has been deferred until July 3rd. Item eight A5 is a zoning case in Ward seven at 3402 Northeast 23rd Street. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would become a new SPUD. Skip, you all right with this?
Could you explain what this project is?
Okay. There is an existing motel, as you can see on the plan, and this property is zoned as R1. So, the owner basically wants to upgrade this motel in the future as funds become available. So, to bring the property in compliance, they are requesting the change to commercial zoning. And all the properties around it are basically all commercial.
There's a club that's on the diagram, adjacent to the motel.
There's what? No, that is not adjacent. There's a retail in between.
Beg your pardon?
There's a retail, retail.
Yeah, there's a retail space and then there's a club that is adjacent to that.
No, our property is only the motel.
Is only the motel?
Yes.
So, is this to create another motel to...
No, 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 no. This is a motel, but the zoning is R1. When they built the motel 50 or 100 years ago, it's an old motel. They did not change the zoning.
Okay.
So, to bring the building in compliance with the proper zoning, we are requesting change in zoning.
Okay.
Excuse me, and this is in anticipation of remodeling of that hotel?
Not right now.
Are you going to check this one down?
But they cannot remodel until the zoning is changed.
This application is really to allow them to add a residential unit onto the east side of the motel for the operator as well as bring the motel use into conformance with the zoning. Currently, that's a non-conforming motel because the property is owned R1. So, there's really two things going on here. They're zoning it commercially for the motel operation and then the SPD allows them to add a residential structure to the side for the owner-operator to live in.
So, basically, that whole corridor from 30, from 23rd and MLK to the east to I-35 is under the same type of zoning that there's businesses that are not properly, that the area is not properly zoned for.
Right. There's commercial zoning to the west and commercial zoning to the east, but for whatever reason, this motel was never zoned properly. And so, this will bring that into conformance and allow him to do the house, the residential addition to the hotel. And that's really all they're doing.
And the residential addition is, is this actually building a house there?
No. Actually, this is not a detached structure. If you look at the northeast corner, they are just going to add a couple of rooms there. The owner or the manager is presently living in one of the rooms.
Rooms, okay, okay.
So, they just want a separate place for him.
Okay, all right. All right. I'm all right with it now.
All right, how about a motion, Skip?
Thank you. Make a motion and we pass.
Second.
All right, cast your votes on item eight A5. Passed unanimously. Item eight B has been deferred until July 3rd. Item eight C has been deferred until July 3rd. Item eight D is a final hearing. This is the third time we've had this in front of us. It has to do with the scenic river overlay. Comments or questions then on item eight D before we go on? All right, cast your votes. An item eight D passed unanimously. Item eight E is again, a final hearing. It sets and simplifies our policies and fees for parking meters. All right, cast your votes on item eight E. Passed unanimously.
We need emergency.
On...
E.
On this one.
Second.
Okay. All right, we're voting on the emergency on item eight E. The emergency passed unanimously too. And item eight F is a companion item?
This is the fees. First one was designated in the areas and some rules, and this is the fees regarding the downtown parking.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Emergency on item eight F passed unanimously.
And Mayor, I just have been advised by Debbie Holdscaw, who's in the audience, that the parking meters are in town and insulation will begin tomorrow.
Can I ask one question about the parking meters? If you pay for the time, is the time limited specifically to that date or can you...
Yes, the time is specific to that date because you're buying that time. Like, if you're in an hour zone, it will register when you purchased it and when it will expire. Now, with the two zones that we've created, you will be able to use that in the other zone, but it is only good for that day.
Is there a possibility that you could come up with a way in which you could purchase for, you know, a paid for pass for more than just that day?
We can look at that. There are options available where you could get like a smart card where it just takes it off, you know, like kind of like a debit card, whatever time you're using.
But you still need to go buy the individual ticket to put in your dashboard. Otherwise, that's how we control that you're not staying there all day as opposed to your regularly allotted time.
Okay. Larry?
Your Honor, I'm sorry, Larry.
Let me just a question for you and Jim. The other night, my wife and I happened to be walking downtown and we saw a potential customer for the Spokys just standing in front of the Spokys machine, just kind of scratching his head on what he needed to do next. Are these parking meters going to be that the average klugs like myself will be able to figure out what has to be done? Or are they... Or how are we going to educate the parker I guess I'm concerned about?
We're working on the marketing campaign right now. There will be a lot of marketing and posters and ambassadors we're hoping to use as far as, you know, someone being there when they're, you know, first trying to use. But I can say that the machines actually have step-by-step instructions. It tells you if you're putting change in, if you're putting your, or if you're using your credit card, and it says, "Print the receipt." And then, on the receipt, it'll tell you to put it on your car, so.
They're much easier than...
It's pretty step-by-step.
They're much easier than the existing parking meters, quite frankly.
All right. Pat?
Just a comment, Your Honor. They use a system in Philadelphia and it works. However, the accusation was made there that the enforcement people watch, see people park their cars. And while they're in the process of walking back to the central meter place to get a ticket, they got ticketed for not having this displayed on their dash. So, I would caution our enforcement people to give our citizens a reasonable chance to get to the machine and get back with the ticket before they issue it.
And we're looking at that as far as the placement. You know, there shouldn't be any further than maybe four vehicles, you know, so that they can get back to their vehicle.
All right. Thank you. On to item eight G. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on item eight G?
Move it.
Have a second?
Say it.
All right, cast your votes. Item eight G passed unanimously. Item eight H is an ordinance that's being introduced and set for public hearing on July 3rd. It kind of cleans up some IMSA language.
Beg dollars here to give us just a brief overview of this ordinance. Okay?
We're looking to make two changes in the ordinance related to the total care program or what we call the medical service program. The first is to put into the ordinance itself, the language in the total care program. In the past, the ordinance simply referenced IMSA's total care program and didn't outline all the details of the program. So, we're putting those specifically into the ordinance so that all the details are there in our ordinance, not just by reference. And then, the second change is to allow us to remove people from the program who don't pay their utility bill. Again, you could sign up for this program. If you're a water customer and you don't pay your utility bill, they will eventually turn your water off and disconnect your service and you'll be removed from the program when they cut off your account. If you're a rural refuse customer who has a well and doesn't have water service, we don't have an effective way to end that account because we're going to continue to pick up the trash that comes there. We try to collect from folks, but if they don't pay, they continue to remain a member of this program. So, what this allows us to do is if you fall far enough behind on your bill, you can be removed from the program even if you're still considered a utility customer. So, those are the two changes that we're making in the ordinance here.
Okay. Larry?
Yeah, I had a question in that way as I was reading it. Maybe I was just confused. If I'm a rural customer, you're going to pick up my trash whether I pay my city trash bill or not?
Because of the public health concerns in terms of having garbage on the streets, you know, we pick up the trash.
We go through other collection measures if you choose not to pay.
That's correct. They do turn those accounts over to collections. They do go, they do a number of steps to collect that, but...
So, I just don't get a permanent... I don't have a in perpetuity free ride on this.
Absolutely not.
Well, that's what I got from it. And I just, I thought this is a pretty good deal. Thank you, Doc.
I just want to add, a few months ago, we talked, Mr. Williamson came and we talked about some of the questions about total care and some of the logistical questions. And this wasn't brought up. There were Tulsa World articles talking about 100 people and problems that may or may not have occurred. This is, this affects several thousand customers, I'm reading. So, thousands of customers did not opt out of the total care program but have not paid their utility bill and are receiving the benefits of total care without paying the cost are in effect being subsidized by everyone else.
Correct.
Did we just discover this? Is this... I mean, this wasn't mentioned in our last discussion, so I'm wondering...
Well, it's something that we've become aware of recently in terms of the scope of the problem. This was something we knew could be a possibility shortly after we enacted the ordinance, but it's become a larger problem. And at this time, when we were correcting this, we thought this was the time to fix this as well.
I mean, how, because how did you come upon the scope of the problem? How did you figure out it was several thousand people?
We've been working with the Utilities Department. When they implemented their new billing system, it took us a little while to be able to parse out the pieces in terms of who's in the program but hasn't paid and that sort of thing. So, we've worked through those issues. Again, it was, we were trying to find the right timing to bring this forward. This seemed like an appropriate time to do that when we were making this other change.
Well, let's be clear about what's going on here. Everybody's required to pay the bill unless you opt out.
Right.
And solid waste too, and they are related. For the vast majority of our customers, they also have water service. And so, when they have water service, there's a more of an incentive because we can terminate that water service. And when we terminate, we prorate the cost. If you, if you only pay half your bill, half your wastewater bill is not paid, half your garbage bill is not paid, half your water bill is not paid, half your... So, there's always, you know, water out there. So, we can terminate the water and that deals with the vast majority of our customers, 90%.
Right. We have a...
Lots of those.
About 180,000 customers. We're talking about a few thousand.
We do have a category though, that we, it's been an issue for years where we don't have water service where it's only solid waste. And now, we've added recently, oh, we've had, we've had stormwater with that for a while. Now, we're recently adding the ambulance service on that. Now, we still bill. And if they don't pay, we do do collection procedures, receive that. We just don't have the same hammer on those that we previously had with the other customers with the water. And so, we're making sure that as we go forward on that, we have the right authority to go out and make collections on that.
We don't know, and if Steve wants to... But we don't know what the financial impact is to IMSA because we... At this sentence, "The impact on IMSA cannot be estimated because of the difficulty of tracking a subset of customers in the utility system through the billing process at IMSA." We don't know how...
Well, I mean, again, this is again, a very small subset of our customers. We have about 180,000 households that are enrolled in the total care program. And so, we're talking about a couple of thousand customers. So, we could go through and identify... We know exactly which customers those are. We could forward the list of several thousand to IMSA.
Is it a couple... This says several thousand. So, is it a couple thousand or what is several thousand?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I can find that out for you. It's certainly less than, I would say, 8,000.
We don't know how many...
But I don't know the exact number.
We don't have any sense of how many of those 8,000 received IMSA benefit.
Oh, no. That's how many are enrolled in the total care program right now that would be slated to be removed are several thousand.
But we don't know how many of those actually received ambulance ride and...
Correct.
And correct.
And again, if they, and if they received an ambulance ride, their insurance company still paid their portion of it. The piece that they would have been, received benefit from is they wouldn't have had to pay their copay or deductible costs.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the only impact is if they actually had a ride during the period that they were not a payer.
Right.
And if they had no insurance, then that would increase the impact. But you got to have a number of sequences in there to have any great financial impact to IMSA at this point in time.
It's such a small fraction of our total enrollment in the plan. We didn't feel it was worth the time and effort to identify the specific impact to IMSA. But we could certainly work with them to calculate that cost.
Okay. So, we're setting a public hearing for July 3rd and then a final adoption vote on July 17th. Any, you have a motion to have this item introduced today?
No.
Okay. We're voting to accept item eight H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight I, readjust the transfer fee from IMSA effective July 1.
Mayor, this is something we discussed last year when we were going to the window of opportunity and we had some discussions around the horseshoe at that point in time that that would probably be the appropriate measure to take. It's been sent to IMSA and they're coming back with that recommendation.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then item eight J is to receive the budget from IMSA.
Move it.
Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight K is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight K? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on eight K. Passed unanimously. Item eight L is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight L?
No.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight M is a budget amendment that's come to us from the Water Trust.
Mayor, with the hot summer that we had, and this is for this fiscal year, this is for fiscal year 11/12, there's some additional expenses the Water Department had, primarily water and electricity because of the high water that was generated last year. So, this is primarily for electricity to pump water up from Matoka to the Draper Reservoir to help fill it. And of course, there were revenues to offset that because of the additional water sales from last year.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item eight M? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight N has to do with the public safety sales tax. This is the second time this has been before the council. Comments or questions here?
This is our annual resolution regarding public safety sales tax. It's N and N and O, and this one is to do with the Fire Department.
All right, cast your votes on eight N. Passed unanimously. And item eight O, as Jim said, is the public safety sales tax for police.
Yeah.
This is the second public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Item eight O? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight P has been struck. item 8O? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8P has been struck. Item 8Q is a companion item on the improvements that we're making at the golf course. All right. Comments or questions on 8Q? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8R is our budget amendment. And this is an opportunity for us to look at some additional dollars that have come in beyond expectations. And I'd ask the city manager to kind of give us a, kind of a brief overview of the options presented. But here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to, I guess, go around the council, allow each council member to discuss whatever they want to talk about. They want to talk about one of them or all five of them, they can. That way, we don't get into whoever makes the first motion first gets a vote. I'd rather see where the sentiment goes, and then we can take a motion where it appears the consensus is, if anywhere. Okay, Jim, you want to give us a kind of a rundown?
Well, this is a unique opportunity. This doesn't happen very often. But when we put together our revenues for this budget year, the way we did that, when the budget was issued in May, we took the 10 years, actual, or 10 months of actual revenues that we had, and we had projections for both the May and June check. We've now received those checks. And if you recall, at our financial workshop back in January, we had economists come in and we talked about a 3% would be an appropriate growth rate to use. And so if you apply that 3% on, now that we have all 12 months of actual revenue that came in, there's really about, because those last two months came in stronger than we'd anticipated, if you take the 3% based upon this year's revenue, we've really got about $1,300,000 of additional revenue that was not anticipated or programmed in the budget as we go forward. So the council does have the option, and I think with prudent financial measures, I mean, the 3% was what the economist said. So it's not like we're, you know, we're have, we're coming up with new money that's not a prudent way of determining what that money is. There's probably an additional $1,300,000 that could be utilized for operational items, because it's anticipated that this revenue will continue based upon the 3% growth rate that we're anticipating. Now, I do want to point out that I want to separate operating funds and capital funds. These are operating funds. We can actually plug this in for operating things and go forward. Now, we also anticipate, because revenues have been good, that our fund balance is going to be in a good position, and that we'll probably be in a position, again, this is a council decision, but we'll probably be recommending to go forward and do a percent of fund balance reduction like we did last year. We are presently over our 15%. And it may be prudent to do an $8 million for drainage and street improvements, similar to what we did last year along those lines. So that's, that's still, is something that will be forthcoming. And we should bring that forward to you sometime in July to have that discussion. But it is anticipated where we know that our fund balance is over the 15%. And that a piece of money will be available for some capital items. So I'm trying to differentiate between the capital and the operating as we go forward. Councilman Shadid, last time, suggested that we go forward with Sunday bus service, and so that was put in. The councilman before that, there was a lot of discussion about police. So staff did put together some options as you to go forward. There are five options that are there, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I think we're in a unique situation that these are all, this is a good situation that we're in right now. And, and, you know, there's really, I don't believe a bad, a bad answer that can come out of this.
Is item 5 to do nothing, basically?
Uh, yes.
So there wouldn't be a vote on item 5?
Well, it could be. You could, you could direct this, yeah.
You could vote not to do anything additional?
You could if you choose.
All right. Doesn't seem pertinent, but... So it sounds to me like we have four choices if we choose to execute one of the four. David, why don't we start with you? We'll go this way, and then we'll go this way. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for waking me up. No, just kidding. Well, let me say this. I think our finance department does a great job of putting together the budget each year. And they, based upon input from the various department heads, do a very thorough job of analyzing this and coming up with a recommendation. I'm saying this just to preface my comments, that I really don't think we, as a group, are in the best position to determine what to do with an increase in the budget, that the finance department would be best suited to make that recommendation, and then we agree or disagree with that. I'd be willing to give us, the council, a test as to how well we've studied the budget. And I brought my budget book with us to follow through with that opportunity. To really make this kind of decision, I think we would really require or need to go through and thoroughly analyze the entire budget and say, okay, we'd like to add 1.3 million to this particular area or not. I would like to see Sunday bus service added to the overall services that our transportation department provides. I'm not, I cannot say, though, that there may not be ways to find reductions in the current bus system to allow us to do that without increasing the overall budget. That's what I'd like to be able to analyze and see if there's current routes that are provided Monday through Saturday, that if we were to reduce those, that would free up enough money to provide Sunday service. And related to that point is, I don't know the number of people we are going to serve with Sunday service. For example, if we're going to add, I mean, if Sunday service is going to accommodate 30 to 50 people a week, that could come out to as little as costing $50,000 per person to provide Sunday service. Couldn't we look at some type of a voucher system where we engage or contract with a taxi service to provide people who need transportation, that type of transportation in lieu of a full-fledged bus service? And would that not cost less than $50,000 per person? That's just an example. I don't know the numbers. That's why I'm wavering right now. Based upon that lack of information, I do know that we need additional police officers. And so looking at the five choices, I would lean toward adding 20 additional police officers because I know we've got a shortage of police officers, and that's a definite item. And adding 20, while it's still far short of the total number we need, I would feel better if I had to vote. So that's where I'm leaning towards, is adding 20 additional police officers with additional funding. But I do still want to offer Sunday service, again, whether it's a traditional bus service or some kind of voucher system. I'd like to explore that. And are there ways that we could reduce the overall operating budget of COPTA as it relates to public transportation to come up with enough money to provide this Sunday service? Thank you.
All right. Meg?
Okay, David. So when you go first, you get the opportunity to say all those good things. I also was gonna start by saying how much I appreciate our finance department. They did a wonderful job putting this budget together, and it's done in a very deliberative and very strategic way. And I feel concerned that we really haven't had the opportunity to be strategic in our thinking about how we might spend this additional $1,300,000. The timeline was fairly short. And so that is a concern of mine. With regard to Sunday bus service, I have actually seen some communication from our friends at APT who have been largely advocating this Sunday service that suggests that even only half of the, if we were to approve only half of the funds that they're requesting here, that that would go a long way to make a large impact in quality of life for folks. And so I'm not sure that we need to consider spending the full $1,300,000. And I'd like to piggyback on David's comments. You know, we do currently offer Sunday bus service on a limited basis through MetroLink. It's not as if we don't have Sunday service. We just don't offer our regular bus routes. I think, I'd like to ask Rick, and I know he's done some work already, but I'd, you know, I'd like to take a longer look at whether we might be able to expand MetroLink. Maybe we acquire another vehicle. Maybe we add the routes. Maybe we do add some regular bus service. But by doing that, we've hired new employees, we've engaged new, it adds a tremendous amount of operating expense in addition to what we're currently doing. And I do think the numbers that have been suggested for Sunday ridership are extremely low, and David's comments about the dollars per ride, whether it's 50 or whether it's, you know, as low as 20. We also have a program called Share Affair where we currently do provide vouchers. And there may be an opportunity to look at doing something like that. So I am wavering a little bit. We clearly have a need for additional police officers. But again, we're committing by hiring additional officers. We're not going to hire them. And then if the budget is not as strong as it is this year, next year, we're not going to be in a position to want to let fire, let police officers or anybody else go. And so I'm probably going to take the most conservative route here and ask that we look at the options for providing enhanced Sunday bus service for the community, and perhaps putting the rest of these dollars into our operating reserves, not into our fund balance, but in, hold it in operating reserves until we have a little bit better idea how we might expend those dollars going forward.
All right.
So winpy answer, Mayor.
It's hard to follow these two acts. And I too agree that we need to have a better look at our transit system. And that I support a Sunday service if there is a true need for Sunday service. And I know that there's not only the issue of Sunday service, but there's also another line in reference to service from the airport. And I think that, you know, for us to just, you know, get a knee-jerk reaction to some degree just because we were told that this is an extra amount of money, which I don't think is extra, but, you know, it's above what was predicted in reference to our revenue predictions and projections. But given all due respect to our finance department, I too think that they are in the better position to make the projections in reference to what would this money actually pay for and how long it would pay. And if we are going to commit ourselves to adding more law enforcement officers, then I think we need to do it in a position where we know for a fact that we're committing to a particular number of individuals that we are going to pay for, for the longevity of those positions. And I just would support a way in which we could either allow these funds to be earmarked or in a way in which they are reserved for the coming year, to see if the changes occur in reference to the city's finances and the revenues. And if it continues to go in the way that it has this year, then we'd be in a, I think, in a better position to say that we do have a sustainable amount of funds that we could, you know, identify, you know, a need or a service to our citizens that these funds will pay for. I've gotten the emails in reference to Sunday service. I don't know exactly how many people are challenged in reference to not being able to get from point A to point B on Sundays. But I've had an opportunity to talk to some individuals one-on-one. I had a very interesting conversation with Mr. Janko out at the airport a couple of Sundays ago. And his expression was what he had directly received from individuals who come into our city at the airport and expected that there would be some type of transit from the airport to downtown. And have found, and then they're told that, you know, we don't have that service. So I think as far as the transit issue, I think it's more than, than just one area. I think it's an area that if we gave Rick, his staff and finance, an opportunity to come back and really look at this in a way in which we could justify it financially, then I support it 100%. I support the need for more law enforcement officers 100%. But again, I don't think it's the place to just, just because the manager says, well, the check was higher, you know, than we expected, and this is what our end result is, is more money than we thought we would have, is, okay, let's just go spend it and not worry about what we're going to have next year. Because if the financial crisis falls, then as Councilman Salia said, you know, what do we do with those officers that you've committed to putting on, and then you've come back at budget time and we find that, you know, where do we cut? And the last place you want to cut is your, is your law enforcement. So I just think the time would be better, that we'd be better served, giving a little bit additional time to those departments that are, you know, experts in those particular areas to have the time that they would need to address the issues and come back with some recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm not as convinced as everybody else is about the strength of the economy going forward. I think there are some significant factors overhanging the US economy. So I think our enthusiasm ought to be tempered until those issues are resolved. Having said that, I believe this money ought to be operating money, or rather, capital money. I know it's an operating excess, but I think we ought to spend it on one-time expenses only, which I think would eliminate the 20 police officer jobs. I think we desperately need more police officers in Oklahoma City. But we also need a dedicated source of funding for those officers that has the potential for being there every year. And I don't believe this 1.3 million dollars has that. Having said that, I would like to see us do a brief study on the cost of adding additional capacity to our MetroLink service. It may be a less expensive solution, the Sunday transportation, than the running buses on Sunday. It would be half-full at best. And so I'd like to see what that costs before we go forward. And if there's any money left over, it ought to go into some kind of capital project we are considering that maybe be short-funded. It may be we've spent this money on Lincoln Golf Course. But anyway, I do think that we need to be careful as we go forward. That we've had some sound economic advice. However, the old saying, you could lay all the economists in the world head to shoulders, and they would still not reach a conclusion without a qualification. And that's the kind of conclusion we had before. It was, there were a lot of ifs at the end of that 3%, and so I think we need to keep that in mind. If any one of those ifs happened to come forward, we have a problem on our hands. So I think we need to be very careful about this money. We've got the money. I'm sure it'll come in the first half of the year because a lot of the things that I'm concerned about won't happen probably till late in the year. But I think we need to be very careful about counting on this money being there year after year. Thank you.
All right. Pete?
Well, my view's a little bit different. This money that we're talking about is money that we budget, we've already budgeted an increase in the budget based on the same formula that we're using to do this 1.3 million. This is the same exact formula that was used before. We raised the budget based on that formula. We've got better, fresher information now. I don't think it's any different to talk about using this money based on what our policy is than it was to add people in IT and add a couple of other three things that we've done all up and down the line, add additional services for transit, were added based on this way of calculating the money. I do share Pat's view that where the economy is certainly not set on concrete, but we have, we anticipate, if we continue to use the projection and things continue to come in the way they are, that we're going to have a surplus fund that's going to exceed, the fund balance is going to exceed the 15%, which is raised well beyond what the bonding agencies believe that we have, we have to have. I believe they say you need to have between 8 to 12, and we're at 15. Is that, is that correct?
They don't give you specific guidelines, but we're over 15%.
Yeah, but we've never heard that you needed 15. We don't, we've never had a bonding agency said, well, because you're not at 15.
Yeah, they're more of the, they take a view of the more the better.
Right. Well, I understand, I understand. But with that theory, we wouldn't hire any more police officers. We wouldn't pay, we just, we just hoard the money. Well, the money's collected to provide services for people. And I think, I think we have an obligation to spend it. We've got a policy set about how we do it, and I think this fits in that policy. All that being said, my, my belief is that if we can be assured that the police officers will not go to work on Wednesday night guarding the prayer meetings and go to work on Saturday night guarding the problems that we have, I am completely in favor of putting the money, putting the 1.3 million to hire as many additional officers as we can. The reason I wouldn't vote directly for Sunday service is because I don't think we've thoroughly vetted the concerns we have about the transit system. Rick's been before us a number of times, and I have this suspicion, although I've never heard him say it, that if he had the opportunity to totally revise the system, to totally change the routes, given, given just the ability to wave a wand and do that, he could come up with a system much more efficient than the one we have now that would provide Sunday service. It probably would be a smaller system, dramatically smaller, but it would be much more efficient. And what I would like to do is spend the 1.3 million on additional police officers. We can get this assurance. And I have, I have a little bit of concern that that assurance has to come through some kind of contact with the unions. I don't see how we could just do that and anticipate that the money be allocated to officers on different shifts than our current contract calls for. I think we have to have some assurance from the union that they would, that they would acquiesce to that. I could be wrong about that, but I just have a gut feeling that it'll, putting more money in that same system that we've already identified as not the most productive is not a good answer either. But I think there's a huge demand for additional police officers. We've known since 2006 that we were understaffed by as many as 200 officers. The city's grown since then. And I believe that if we solve the problem, the Wednesday, Saturday problem, that that's where the money ought to go. I do think that we ought to initiate, as Pat indicated, a short study, but I think it ought to be intensive. I think we ought to seriously allocate a couple of these Tuesdays that I'd planned to spend in my greenhouse. I think we ought to allocate a couple of them to trying to figure out what we're going to do about this. Because I don't think there's anybody around this horseshoe that thinks we have the most effective, efficient bus system that we could have, even given the problems that a bus system has to have. I mean, it, it is going to be very difficult to have, to just let the bean counters control the... the bus system, because you've got social concerns, you have needs that are out there. Sunday service is one of those needs. It's probably not gonna be a revenue producer, but it is a need that's gotta be looked at. But I think what we ought to commit to, um, doing the police now, if we can get the assurance about where the manpower's gonna be allocated, we ought to commit to an intensive look over the next six months at how, what we can do with the bus, with, with, with the overall transit, not just buses, but the overall transit, and what do we really wanna do with that? And I think that also has to, to hinge on whether or not this, the potential for a midterm adjustment, um, like we've done in the past, whether that money could be spent to enhance the transit, transit system. Because if it could, and we're spending it right, I think that's a good place to spend it. I think that would be, that, so I think that's my preference, is that, given, I'll, I'll go over it one more time. Police, if we can get assurance of the allocation. Second, an intensive look over the next six months at how to enhance the bus system, including Sunday service. And third, a decision as to whether or not, if there is additional funding in a mid-year, a mid fiscal year adjustment, could it be used to do that? Based on that, I could vote next, on the 3rd of January, if I had all those questions answered properly, I could vote for that next Tuesday, I mean, next meeting, which is two weeks from today.
All right. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. We, we've talked about the, the economy and the uncertainties of it. Dr. Shidib and I were talking before council today. My personal preference is to have no debt at all, and so, and have a cash reserve set up like our fund balance. And this is not new to Jim, that I don't believe in debt. That being said, we do have debt, we do have uncertainties, we do have a fund balance to, to, uh, take care of that. And yes, we don't know, I don't know what's gonna happen ahead, as, as Councilman Ryan has talked about. All we have is the information today, and so what can we do today? I think it goes back, instead of a policy, I would like to, in, in my mind thinking, inject the word priorities, and what are our priorities as a city? And, and over the last several weeks, I have had an opportunity to talk to a number of our citizens at neighborhood meetings about what they feel our number one, number two, number three, if you will, priorities are. And without exception, in Ward Three, the information has come back, their number one priority is public safety and police. And so I'm in favor of taking, uh, the $1.3 million and allocating that to police. I understand there's a problem on utilization, on when it goes in, but from what I've learned in talking to the chief and some of the other officers, if you add police officers at any time during the, the 24/7, 365-day period, you do have a positive impact in the quality of life and the response that the police can give. So I'm in favor of doing that while we pursue other ways to improve the utilization. With respect to the bus service, I think the idea of studying that and looking into the future to see how we can come up with a more efficient, effective bus system is a great thing. If it's shrinking, if it's crossroads, whatever it is, I'm not a bus expert, I think that should be done. And then with respect to, as we move along, the number two priority of the people in Ward Three are roads. And I think that the, uh, if the fund balance stays the way it is in four, five, six months like we did last year, I come up with an idea that we can take that additional money, the figure of $8 million has been talked about, and allocate that for where the need is great, between roads and drainage, because in some of areas of our city, we have great drainage issues. Uh, that's the way we ought to go with that money right there. I do have a personal problem as we go along. I would like to be on record of voting for this, and I do have a vacation scheduled next week, July 3rd. I apologize for that, but I'm going to California, so I will not be here in two weeks when that comes up. Thank you, Your Honor.
So Larry, you're, you're suggesting you would vote for number three, the road improvements?
I want road improvements, the, the study for, for, for transportation, uh, no, no change in the transportation budget as of today, uh, but we look for improving it, and then using the $8 million that's been talked about later on, should we have that monies to go for drainage or, or for roads?
Okay. Ed?
I wanna back up just a second and take the 30,000-foot view of addressing what Larry talked about in terms of priorities and what Pat talked about in terms of a dedicated source of funding. This seems like a awkward, uh, method. I, I agree that, that we need more police officers with Chief City's recommendations, and I, I think on a utilitarian scale, it's hard to argue that the greatest good for the greatest number of people would be satisfied by increasing police officers. But to go year to year and depending on what last month's sales tax revenues are, make decisions, the thing could be reversed or, without having a dedicated source of funding, seems like a inefficient, uh, way of doing things. And so I would think it sounds like to us and to the citizens, as you pointed out, it's streets, public safety, transit, these are all high priorities, both for our city and cities across the country. So I question why we don't have dedicated sources of funding for those, and yet we have dedicated sources of funding, for example, for the zoo. In 1989, we passed a 1/8 cent sales tax, 1/8 of every penny of everything that's bought in Oklahoma City goes to the zoo. That, that's the one entity that could consistently and does get private donations, private citizens and corporations. They will fund the zoo. You're not gonna get private donations for transit, you're not gonna get private donations for police officers. So in my mind, over the next year, it's time to look at the 1/8 cent sales tax on the zoo. At the same time, a, a significant portion of our hotel and motel tax goes to the fairgrounds. So you have a dedicated source of funds for the fairgrounds. Well, we decided as part of MAPS Three that we would give a $50 million cash infusion to the fairgrounds. So after a $50 million cash infusion to the fairgrounds, does the fairgrounds still need the same percentage of the hotel motel tax? And could that be a source of funds? I think if you take this to a vote of the people and you say, we, we need more police officers, Red, Chief City's saying we need as much as 200 police officers, we, we would like to have this dedicated source of funds to police officers, and, and have the people choose between more police officers or spending eight to 10 million dollars a year of dedicated source of funds to the zoo, or the fairgrounds after the taxpayers just gave a $50 million cash infusion to the fairgrounds. I think that they would vote for the police officers, that's just my gut feeling, and we wouldn't have this debate every year. And that problem would go away, and then we could address some other things. And then we could debate how much this year of excess funds we wanna give to the zoo, instead of more central core, our core business, which is public safety. That would've been taken care of, and then extra funds, we can talk about the zoo. I, I don't, I'm not sure how this got into, and this is why I wanted to pull, delay the budget vote, or I, it, I didn't wanna pull Sunday bus service. I don't think anything you pull out and having a one-to-one against police, extra police is gonna win. You, you could take anything we did in the budget this year, extra IT, and vote on extra IT versus more police officers, and more police officers is gonna win. I mean, if we set things up like this, where it's a choice between police or X, X is always gonna lose. Doesn't matter if it's Sunday bus service or, or anything. So I'm, I'm, I don't like the way that this has been, as, as a this or that, and I'm not sure that we have to choose, that they're mutually exclusive and we have to choose between them. I don't think, without the Sunday bus service question, we find, we find this 1.3 million, that we would've come back one, one week later and had spent 1.3 million on police. I think we're, we're given a choice of spending 1.3 million on police because there's this bus service and they're being put up against each other. Uh, I don't understand why, we, we, it's clear the fund balance is gonna be exceedingly high, and we're gonna have $8 million to, to deal with. I'm not sure why we're, we have this, you know, choose this or that, knowing that there's $8 million more dollars in July, and why we don't pull the fund balance into the discussion right now. That's, that's $8 million. My personal view, we spent $8 million last year on street resurfacing. I mean, is this gonna turn into an $8 million fund for street resurfacing? My personal view is that we got ourselves into this trouble in the 2007 bond. We're spending million, tens and tens of millions of dollars on street widening projects instead of street resurfacing, and, and that's why you're getting the low, uh, citizen happiness, and, and now we're trying to make up the difference by throwing $8 million. What, you know, you could, you could spend, you could do one and a half million on, on transit, you could do police, you could, you could do all three, I'm just saying they're not mutually exclusive. I just wanna emphasize, and I know I'm going on, but I just wanna emphasize that it's not just Sunday bus service, Pete alluded to this, it's, it is revamping the whole bus service. We talked about, well, we don't know what the ridership is on Sundays. Well, we don't know what the ridership is on the Northwest Express route. Right? I mean, on May 8th, Rick gave a presentation, he talked about one idea might be a Northwest Express route. Pat asked him, well, what's the ridership? In the past, we've had that and it didn't do very well. And, and Rick said, I don't know what the ridership is. I mean, where did that come from? Skip has expressed, uh, for, support for a park-and-ride, which I think is a great idea. To have, you know, load people up in the morning and the evening, but where did a park-and-ride to Gallardia come from? I mean, that's what we're doing, Memorial and MacArthur, we're doing a park-and-ride outside the doors of Gallardia. I mean, what is the ridership for that? And where, how did that get put into the budget? But Sunday bus service, even a limited form of it, like Meg's talking about, doesn't get put into, when 48% off the charts, one out of every two people who use the bus service are saying, what I want the most is Sunday bus service. And so we don't give even a limited form of Sunday bus service, but we have a park-and-ride out to Gallardia, with, with no vetting and no idea what the ridership is. We need to go to a grid system, we need to contract the system. That Northwest Express route is, is going the opposite direction. I, I would, I would ask that, echoing what Pete said, that we spend one of our Tuesdays off and we have a workshop on how, what are our priorities, what is the five-year plan, 10-year plan for our bus system? How are we going to tweak the inefficient bus system? And I understand the argument that you don't wanna just throw more money at an inefficient, broken system. Um, and so I, I would move, whether it's today or in two weeks, a resolution, hopefully somebody would second it, that we have a workshop on what exactly we wanna do with our bus transit system. I, I don't, I, I have a question about whether the downtown bus station can, has the capacity to add more lines. I mean, we've talked about instead of Sunday bus service, we want to just add more lines. Does the downtown bus station have the capacity to do that if we wanna expand our service? I mean, I, I believe it's, there's possibility it's at maximum capacity. So if you wanna expand it, you may, Sunday may be your best shot at that. I don't, I don't know how you could vote on police today without, as Pete talked about, we don't know what the union's gonna think about mandating that these new hires work on the weekend. I mean, how, how can you vote on that today without, I mean, we're in, we're in negotiations now, I just, I don't understand how we could do that today. Those, I, as a compromise, Meg's idea of doing some kind of, the money's there, of doing some scaled-down service on Sunday and, and taking your most popular lines and at least doing those on Sunday and seeing what your ridership is would be, would seem to be a compromise.
All right. Gary?
Well, I, I don't know that I can add a whole lot of new stuff to what's been said already. Just going down the line, I, I think that, um, we all understand that a city like Oklahoma City needs to have seven-day-a-week bus service. But I have said many, many times that I'm really concerned that we keep throwing money into a system that's inefficient because we try to cover all 620 square miles. And, um, I, I'm just a little hesitant to throw another million-plus into that system without a discussion about what a, um, a more efficient system would look like and, and what it would cost. I, I just have a concern that we just keep throwing money out there and we're not really fixing the system, uh, long-term. I agree with the people about police officers. We've seen studies, we've seen staffing reports, we, we've seen the numbers, we've seen all of that that indicate we need more public safety people. Not only do we need more, uh, police officers, but there'll come, be a time here in a few years when you're gonna need to add firefighters for the fire stations that we've already approved building. So you've gotta figure out how you're gonna fund new firefighters also. So I, I think, um, I, I could vote today for 20 new police officers if, if, if I had a comfort level on the efficiency of the system that's currently being used, being at its maximum. So I think that discussion still needs to go on out there. Roadway improvements, we're spending a lot of money on roadway improvements, uh, not only in the bond issues, but, but our, uh, excess revenues from last year, we're getting ready to add new excess revenue or, or fund balance from this year. We're putting a lot of money out on those streets and, and, uh, I, I wonder about how much more, how more increase we can put in roadway improvements and still maintain the quality and, and so forth. Nobody's talked about the capital maintenance fund for MAPS Three projects. If you wanna talk about long-term vision and not, not, um, compounding the problems for future councils, uh, just don't worry about, uh, the capital fund for these MAPS Three projects. Do you, what do you think that the repair and operational costs are gonna be for the, uh, for the trolley system? I mean, that's, that's gonna be huge. You're adding a great big park down here. The convention center is gonna be much larger than the one we have now. So, um, although I'm not ready to vote on something today, I would like to see, uh, hopefully there's somebody that's, that's looking at, uh, a study or something to tell us what they think, um, the capital funding needs are gonna be for these MAPS Three projects in the future. If, depending on what that dollar amount is, if you divvy it up over years starting here pretty quick, it's gonna be a much lower amount than if you wait 10 years and have to figure out how much a year you're gonna put into it, uh, to keep it going when they finally start coming online. So, um, I, I'd like to see some kind of study done on what we need to start putting in per year, just like savings. So if you can put in a smaller amount and start it earlier, you're gonna compound it much greater as you go along. I guess all of this ranting goes down to number five, and, and I think until we can get some of the answers to the questions on the other four, I'm for no change at this point in time. That money's not gonna arrive. It'll be there six months from now if we need to vote, after we've seen some, got some more information, seen some studies, whatever it is, uh, that, that money'll still be there available to utilize in the future. So I'm probably at this point leaning towards number five.
Okay. We have four citizens that have signed up to be heard. I'll, uh, call them up in the order they've been presented to me, and they'll have three minutes each. Ray Crowder?
Ray Crowder of 2924 West Hill, Oklahoma City. I've heard the discussions today, and I agree that there's some things that need to be studied and understood, and no, you weren't able to get any numbers as to what Sunday service would provide as far as the number of people that it would be able to service. All I can tell you, in public hearings in the past, it's been the number one thing that was advocated for, and though I may find that surprising, given that some of it, personally, more of the conversations I have with people have to do with the fact that bus service ends at 6:30, 7:00 PM at night and such, so I can't tell you where the most people would be served when it comes to bus service, but I can tell you that the system, in most people's eyes, is far short of what it needs to be as far as the number of hours that it operates. And a lot of times I see the changes that come across is trying to move further out in, in the pattern that it runs, and that, to me, seems, um, just fruitless as, has been stated here, as far as the number of square miles it has to cover. But I can say that the system does need to service people in a better way. I honestly do not know how efficient or inefficient it is in far as how it spends its money. I can't tell you that, but I can say that there's a lot of service that isn't provided that most people expect and really do need to be able to do. Uh, as early as it starts in the morning, uh, I go to work at 7 o'clock in the morning, so it's just barely there in time for that. And a lot of people would like it running later and such. I can't tell you whether Sunday service or other service is going to be more beneficial, but I can say that the metro transit system needs to be operating better. Last week, a number of you talked about trying to be moving forward to being a big-league city, and that's one thing that in all the study that I've ever seen... And that's one thing that in all the study that I've ever seen when it comes to bringing more business to town and such, is they look at what kind of public transit, how people can get to work. And the statement too, has been made as to, you know, the ability of people coming into town through the airport, not being able to, be able to pick up public transit from there. So there's a lot to be looked at when it comes to that, but I just advocate for improving the system and not necessarily trying to bring it down to where it only serves, you know, a few square miles or anything. I can say that everyone wants it to be efficient, but from what I have seen, there's a lot that needs to be done to improve the system in the number of hours it serves, the number of people it can serve, and not necessarily trying to reach out to every means of the far reaches of our big city. However, I will say that, you know, if other cities would get involved and everything, that might be more possible. But when it comes to, when it comes to that, I don't see for as many cities as most people want to compare this system to. And I'm talking about the public when I talk to them, they want to compare it to every city that we have large around us, cities that we don't have the population to even be in the same sentence with. But it does seem that I agree with Councilman Shadid on the fact that every city that has anything that they can point to, that they can be proud of in their public transit system, does have to support itself with a dedicated sales tax. So I believe that he's correct, that this is a good time to even consider that, and if you're wanting to, try to consider revamping the whole system. So there'll be many people who'll tell you that Sunday service is needed and, you know, there's, there's just lots of needs for the whole system. But I do ask you to consider everything that you can to try to make this a better public transit system. I and many people I know depend upon it. I don't drive, I can't, and I don't have any other option when it comes to that. There's other people who take the bus system, either because of how little parking there is downtown, or the fact that they don't have a good reliable vehicle. So do consider this and try to move forward in a manner that helps to improve the, the metro transit system.
John Height?
I'm John Height, thirty-two, thirty-seven Northwest Forty-first Street, Oklahoma City. And I just urge you to reconsider your thoughts on, on public transit for, on Sunday. We're probably one of the few cities, Oklahoma City and Tulsa, that don't provide their citizens with a bus system that is energetic towards getting people to where they want to go. I know I have taken the buses, well, at least I purchased two monthly bus passes in the last year. And I have a car, it's insured, but I do think that a lot of people really need to be able to get to work on Sunday. And if you have the same kind of bus connections that you do on Saturday and, of course, weekdays, you've got pretty good connections for these people who work. But you're denying these people who work a chance to work on Sunday. And it's, that's sad. And these are, these are the, you know, the poor economic people, the people who work at Carl's Jr. and, and Sonic are the, are people I see on Bus Twenty-three going to their, or at least from, at least they, a lot of these people transfer from Bus Seven, which goes down May Avenue, to Twenty-three, which goes across Twenty-third Street. And so, but we do need to find a permanent revenue source for our bus transit and future high-speed rail for the region. And I'm suggesting maybe a multi-county district to establish a tax to do prepaid construction of our high-speed transit from Norman to Edmond, and possibly even to go through your Stillwater if we can get the citizens there to vote for a, perhaps a sales tax. And then also from Shawnee to Mustang, Yukon, you know, through, through our downtown. And we still need, probably need to get federal help if we're going to build a, a transit system, because the state legislature, if they can't fix the state Capitol, they're obviously not going to help us at all with our, you know, with state transit. After the high-speed rail, if it's, if it's built, the tax could pay for operations and improvements. We also need half-hour transit between the airport and downtown, in my opinion, that could be routed on the new boulevard to the airport, or either the new transit to Meridian Avenue and up Meridian Avenue. This tax, this multi-county tax could pay, contribute through a lot of cities, like Moore doesn't even have any kind of best service. And if we had a multi-county tax, we could establish, hopefully, that we'd have money that would be going into these cities to provide best service on, you know, on a regular basis for, for the city of Moore and for other cities who are less inclined to, to support public transit. Now, if Oklahoma City's going to live up to its big-league city mantra, we've got to establish Sunday best service. Our disabled and our, our economically disadvantaged folk need this service. We citizens have a responsibility to take care of each other. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thomas Lawson, Larson?
Thomas Larson, five-oh-one North Douglas, Oklahoma City. I work at New View Oklahoma, formerly the Oklahoma League for the Blind. We're the largest employer of blind and visually impaired individuals in Oklahoma. And I'm also a member of APT. Many of our, our clients, our employees depend on public transportation to get anywhere they want to go. That option isn't available to them on Sunday. Imagine if someone took your car key, car keys one day a week and you had to stay home. It would make life difficult. It's really, it's a matter of fairness, of allowing access to the community for all residents every day of the week. I believe Sunday bus service would also benefit businesses throughout Oklahoma City. Many of them have a tough time staffing on Sunday when their employees can't get to work. Any improvement we make in the public transit system is going to encourage more people to ride the bus. If you increase ridership, you can reduce pollution and traffic throughout Oklahoma City. I think Sunday bus service would be a great step forward. Public transit is a place where Oklahoma City is lacking. We do a lot of things well, but the public transit system needs improvement. This is a great first step and I encourage you all to consider it. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. Nidra Ruth?
I live at eighty-five-oh-eight St. Michael Court. I think we need Sunday service because there's a lot of people that are not eligible for share fare that ride the bus, the lower income. And share fare, you're only allowed six books a month. To get in a cab, it's two-seventy-five, two dollars a mile. That thirty-six dollars goes fast. And the, the other bus service on Sunday, the metro links, it's limited, and if you're not in the area, you're not going to get to ride it unless you walk a long distance. So Sunday service would provide a lot of people that go to work, that make minimum wage, because if they're not getting bus service and having to pay a cab or somebody else, they're paying to work and that's never a good thing. So I hope you do consider Sunday service. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Well, I listened to all eight of you speak and I didn't hear a strong consensus, so let me just talk. Is there anyone today that would like to make a motion on any of these four? Okay, hearing none. The city manager's been given a lot of instructions and requests, and so I assume he's going to go to work on some of that and have individual conversations with you on other elements, and we'll reconvene in the future. And I think we, we ought to be sensitive to the fact that Larry's not going to be here. But as we all know, we never know when we're going to be here. And so on a, something like this, it doesn't seem to be time-sensitive, but at, at the same time, when someone's ready to make a motion, we ought to go forward with it, if that time ever comes.
I'd like to have something back on the agenda, though, in two weeks. I mean, I, I don't want to love this thing to death. I mean, we need to, we need to move forward. I mean, there's money there, we're needs there. We need to have some, we, I don't know necessarily we need to have anything that we can vote on in two weeks, because it may take longer than that. Given the parameters I put on it, you've got to, you have to find out something about the, how the police would operate, and we'd also have to figure out what we can do and how, how quickly we could convene a group that would make a decision about what's the best use of funds for the transit system. But, but I don't want to wait six months or a year and, and be here where we are now. I want to, I want something, some kind of a, potentially an action item, or certainly a, an item that'll further this discussion in two weeks, perhaps with an action item, then two weeks after that.
We could just defer this item for two weeks, which would leave a place on there to, to go forward if you so decide.
Well, I, I think, well, we can do that. I, I was really more looking, I mean, I think one of the consensus things that I have heard is that there are a lot, there, there are questions about these things that need to be answered. They need to be fleshed out. I don't think two weeks is too long to expect some of those things to be responded to.
Okay. Could be in two weeks, somebody wants to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we defer it for two weeks?
And may I make a request, just like Pete did, that our transit department looks at a voucher system and, as far as speaking with some of the cab companies to see what could be done to lower the cost to where it would be affordable, at least for a temporary solution, until we're able to decide on a more permanent Sunday service. Thank you.
Well, I, I would move then we continue it two weeks with one further comment. We, I used, and a number of us used inefficient as, in, as a description of the bus system. I think that's a natural product of what we've asked Rick to do. I think that inefficiency is certainly not anything generated by him. It's a, it's the result of our request to do this, or do that, or make this work, or go here, or go there. And I think that's contributed to the efficiency. I have every reason to believe if he got his way, he'd have a lot more efficient system. But I, and I would like to see it looked at from that perspective, though. So I'd like to continue this for two weeks.
All right. Extending on that, could an actionable item in two weeks also address the possibility of a workshop addressing those concerns that he outlined on?
I, I don't have a problem with a workshop at all. We've had some workshops and I, I think that would be a really good idea to do that. We are having two workshops scheduled over the next couple of months. One is that Councilman Greenwald's asked we do a workshop to take a look at downtown issues, and, and we're, we're planning to do that. We're also planning a strategic planning workshop for the council to come and take a look at our priorities, which we do periodically, and we haven't done that for a couple of years, so we think that's prudent to go forward. Would it be helpful to have a consultant come in and evaluate the system and make some recommendations and then go to a workshop? Would it be better to have some outside expertise help us come up with this ideal system or this more efficient system from scratch, and, and take a couple of months and, and, or whatever it would take to do that, and then have the workshop to sit down and, and talk about maybe some options that they could provide to us on that? Sometimes, any cutbacks in service, someone will be, someone will be injured by that or, or at least inconvenienced by that. And sometimes having, on an issue like this, I know sometimes we overconsultant ourselves, I, I totally understand that. But on an issue like this, it might not be bad to have somebody outside saying, you know, if you were to start from scratch, this is really what it should look like.
Jim, I think that would be a good idea if the council is ready to make some revolutionary, revolutionary-type changes to the system. If we are, then I'd say let's go forward with looking, bringing in a consultant and look at significant dramatic changes that may make some people upset, but hopefully better serve the entire population. So I'd say let's move forward.
Well, you kind of touched on a concern I've got here in a couple of different ways you danced around it, but is two weeks enough time for, to get in front of COPPA? We keep thinking, we keep forgetting, you've got a trust out there that runs this system. And, you know, for this council to just say, we're going to do this, and it hasn't come through, been vetted through COPPA, would be like saying, okay, if I brought up a motion to add a new forty-eight-inch water line out there, and it never went in front of Water Trust. You know, we've got a trust that we, I assume we rely on to tell us what we do with our transit and parking systems, and I haven't heard that they've been involved in this at all. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that some of this is going down a road that's not bringing them in the loop to at least give us, yes, we like that, no, we don't like it, we agree with the numbers, we agree with this or agree with that, we agree with the letter from APT. I mean, you know, there's a number of things that COPPA could be giving us some, some, some advice on or some information on that we haven't got out of them yet. So I'm a little concerned about that being done in just two weeks.
I do, I do think that we're hearing, though, a bit of a sea change around this council, that people are really maybe ready to take some revolutionary steps and look at making some very dramatic changes. And, you know, Rick is here, you know, we, we do value that trust very much. I hope they're listening to this and would be our partners in taking a really hard look going forward. But Jim, I would agree, you know, we, now we have some extra dollars, maybe we could allocate a little bit of those extra dollars to helping us find a world-class consultant that could help us analyze this system and figure out what to do.
You know, we had a, a workshop with COPPA, I don't remember exactly how long ago it was, but it was out of Metro Tech, and we had presentations about a, a regional system that was, that ACOG talked about. And then we did spend some time, you know, that we really do have too big a system and it really needs to be pared back, but there was really, didn't seem to be any momentum at that time to really take action to, to respond to that. And I don't know how long ago that was, eighteen months ago that we had, had that. And so I think really bringing in a consultant might, might be the catalyst and have some, some real hard options for us to evaluate.
I think I'd also like to add that we have had some citizens that have been involved in the transit discussion, not just the streetcar, but transit in general, that have done a lot of work and have looked at some of these grid systems and perhaps building some of the work that's already been done, along with a consultant's work, might help us move forward a little bit quicker.
Can I summarize? Oh, go ahead, Ms. President.
I was going to say, the only comment I'd like to make is we need to be careful, we don't try to delegate our responsibility to a trust. Policy's responsibility is with this council, and it's the trust to implement those policies as best they can. Just saying there's a trust there doesn't resolve us a responsibility to set a policy that deals with public transportation.
We're not advocating we do something like that, that we give our policy administration away from this council, but I don't think you just leave them in the dark out there. I, I think if you've got a trust that deals with a specific area of the city, then I think they at least ought to be involved to the point that you're, you're acting on something that comes out of the trust. That's my only concern with it.
We, we have a motion on the two-week deferral. I'll need a second.
Second.
Second. All right. Ready to vote on the deferral? All right, cast your votes. This item is deferred two weeks.
Mayor, can I summarize some of the discussion to just make sure that my direction is, you agree with what I'm, what I'm hearing today?
Yeah.
One thing is that we should come back with some options and see what we can do short-term on some, some Sunday enhancements, whatever that might be. And I, there's a number of things that were thrown out, whether it's, it's more metro link, whether it's taxi vouchers, or other things that are out there. So we will go and look and see what we can do to do something to enhance the Sunday services that is, that are provided. Secondly, we'll go forward to take, procure a consultant to assist in evaluating the, the transit system and, and take a look at, really doing some revolutionary things to bring back a more efficient, better system that we have out there and have some, some, and I would assume we probably want to do that before we have the workshop. Obviously, council wants to be involved and we'll be talking to the consultants as we get them, but, but, but I think we probably need some information before we go forward on that. And then I'm also hearing that, that we should see if there are some options on the public safety side of things. If we were able to go forward and add police officers, if we could do that, to have some type of, of way to put those on more on the weekends than, than the current shifting allows for. And so I'm, I'm hearing follow-up in those areas. I've seen nodding of heads. Is there anything else?
The only other thing I would say is that, I mean, one, I'm not sure how long it would take to find and do a consultant. I mean, one, there's theoretical and then there's also empirical. I mean, one thing a consultant may want to see is some data, empirical data. I mean, we're doing a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar experiment, basically, where we're going to do a Northwest Express route. We don't know the ridership. We could spend a hundred-and-fifty thousand to do it, and we're going to see what the ridership is, and then we'll make a decision. You could do the same kind of thing on a limited basis with Sunday bus service, do your most popular routes, see what the ridership is, and have some empirical data to give to the consultant. So you don't necessarily, I mean, you can take some action before you, you get a final verdict from the consultant.
from the consultant.
All right, so we've had a two-week deferral on item 8R. Item 8S is a resolution approving our emergency operations plan, and Frank Barnes is here to give us a presentation on the update of the plan. Frank, good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to give a brief presentation on the Oklahoma City Emergency Operations Plan, and the revisions we made to the plan since it was last brought before the city council for adoption in 2010. The Emergency Operations Plan provides a framework which the city of Oklahoma City prepares for, responds to, recovers from, and mitigates the impacts of major emergencies, disasters, and catastrophes, or catastrophic incidents. The plan is an all-hazards plan, and it places a high premium on resourcefulness, improvisation, and creative problem-solving. The Emergency Operations Plan focuses on coordinating the emergency and disaster activities of organizations by identifying their roles and responsibilities of the city departments, our nonprofit organizations, and private sector stakeholders. Such pre-planning and role identification fosters relationships, and helps facilitate both efficient and effective response and recovery operations. The city of Oklahoma City is required to have an Emergency Operations Plan in accordance with Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003. The city of Oklahoma City is also required to have an Emergency Operations Plan under the municipal code, section 15-18. The Oklahoma City Emergency Management is responsible for maintaining that plan. The plan is a citywide plan, and it is active at all times. It does not require a declaration of a state of emergency for it to take effect. Because it is active at all times, it is both scalable and flexible, so that we can add components of the plan as necessary to meet the size, type, and complexity of the incident. It was last updated in May of 2010, and since then, we have experienced our own series of major emergencies, disasters, as well as large-scale planned events. And from those events and incidences, we do after-action reviews, and we identify areas for improvement, as well as lessons learned and best practices. And we've incorporated those into the plan update. Also, last week, you adopted the Updated Hazard Mitigation Plan, so we've incorporated components of the Updated Hazard Mitigation Plan into the EOP. And at the federal level, there have been a couple of changes that have occurred. One is that FEMA has had an initiative of integrating people with disabilities into emergency management, and the second is the release of the National Disaster Response Framework. When we do the review, we do a collaborative approach, working with the Oklahoma City Local Planning and Preparedness Council. The LPPC members provide input and suggestions for revisions. On April 5th of this year, we presented the Revised Emergency Operations Plan to them. They approved those revisions, and approved submitting the plan to the city council for adoption. It then is reviewed by the municipal councilor's office. They make recommendations, and we've incorporated those recommendations into the Revised EOP. And lastly, we present it to the city council for your adoption. So what's new in the plan? Well, in the Purpose, Scope, Situation, and Assumptions section, we updated the hazard analysis summary, so that it matched the adopted Hazard Mitigation Plan. In the Concept of Operations section, and in the subsection on Response, we added the key concepts for disability-inclusive emergency management. These were provided to us by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and specifically the Office of Disability Integration. These 10 key non-discrimination concepts are applicable under federal law, and if you apply these 10 concepts to any disaster, in any situation within that disaster, you'll ensure the proper integration of people with disabilities. One of the examples in there is self-determination. People with disabilities are most knowledgeable what their needs are, and what they require from us. Another is no one-size-fits-all. People with disabilities do not all require the same assistance, and do not have the same needs. Another key point is no charge. People with disabilities may not be charged to cover the costs or measures necessary to ensure equal access and non-discriminatory treatment. We also updated the service animal definitions, consistent with current federal regulations, and we also added the use of trained miniature horses as service animals. And there's a photograph of a miniature horse being used as a service animal up there on the screen. If you're wondering about why miniature horses, they actually have a longer lifespan than dogs, and that's why many times they're preferred, to get more use out of them, and yes, they can be housebroken. Okay. Also, under Concept of Operations, under the subsection Recovery, we added an explanation of the National Disaster Recovery Framework. And this really covers long-term recovery, how a community would rebuild after a catastrophic incident. It explains how the federal government will work together, and what they will do in long-term recovery, but it also talks about the local level, and specifically creates or encourages the use of a local disaster recovery manager. So we also added to the plan the local disaster recovery manager. Again, this is a position that would coordinate and advance the long-term recovery at the local level after a catastrophic event. This is not necessarily the function of emergency management, and the role and responsibility for the long-term recovery manager is assigned to the Planning Department in Emergency Support Function Number 14, which covers long-term community recovery. In the section on Direction, Control, and Coordination, one of the lessons learned from last year's wildfires was that we needed to include the concept of the incident complex. And this is a concept that's used in the Incident Command System, and in other parts of the country, it's been used for years, especially when you have multiple incidents occurring at the same time, and those incidents are demanding the same kinds and types of resources. So it allows for the better planning logistical, or acquisition of logistics and resources, and resource management. Another thing we did under Direction, Control, and Coordination is we removed a lot of the details about multi-agency coordination, and put it into a separate appendix, and we expanded that appendix, so that it would synchronize with the Regional Multi-Agency Coordination Center operating guidelines. We added two annexes to it. We found, over the last several years, that the warning, the public protection, and the evacuation functions were components of other plans that the city had. For example, our dam emergency action plan, and the emergency response plans that the utilities department has for its water treatment plants. All have references in there to warning, evacuation, and public protection. So we decided to take those from being separate standalone plans, and incorporate them as annexes into the Emergency Operations Plan. The Public Protection and Evacuation Annex describes the process for implementing and supporting protective actions taken by the public or for the public. It also addresses shelter in place, as well as large-area or large-scale evacuations of Oklahoma City residents. It incorporates the provisions of the Oklahoma Homeland Security Regions 6 and 8 Regional Evacuation Plan. And it recommends protective actions based on the particular hazard that's confronting us. Also in that annex, it identifies the Oklahoma City Police Department as the coordinator or primary city department responsible for public protection and evacuation. The Warning Annex describes the system that provides timely and effective warnings to the public during and after an incident and disaster. In that annex, it identifies the police department, and more specifically, 911, as the coordinating and primary city department for warnings. The appendices that appear in the plan create a user-friendly plan, in that if you remove four of those appendices, Appendix B, C, D, and F, and you take just those four appendices, and you put them in your pocket during a crisis, you've got a quick reference guide that provides you with the key information you need, without having to memorize the entire plan. The distribution of the EOP, again, it's distributed electronically to all city departments, as well as to other government agencies, private nonprofit, and our private sector partners. It's posted on the city SharePoint site, known as Inside OKC. And during the latter part of the summer and into the fall, we'll be doing orientations for city employees on the Emergency Operations Plan. Okay, questions?
Questions for Frank?
Yeah, Pat?
On the evacuation plan, Frank, the city will implement, I hope this year or soon, a new traffic management plan that gives us computer control of a lot of traffic signals. Is this plan cognizant of that? Does it integrate the ability to funnel traffic out of town, downtown, for instance, if we had to evacuate downtown?
It's cognizant of that. We talked to Stuart Chai, we talked to him about that system, and we make reference to the ability to control the traffic signals, and to direct the flow. And as we see, like with the Thunder Games, the police department has the ability to manually control those signals, and ensure that the flow goes in a certain direction, so they can quickly move cars and vehicles out of downtown.
The second question, or suggestion, is, in about three months, I think you ought to go interview all the department heads in the city, and make them show you their plan.
Larry?
Just a quick question, Frank. I was interested on the risk assessment, that hail, a risk event per year is high, but damaging event per year is low? Some of our residents might question that in recent experience.
Yeah, what we're looking at is the actual loss of structures, and where the structure is destroyed, or major damage, where they're uninhabitable, or take significant dollar to repair. Yeah, when you have a hailstorm, and your car gets dented, and you've got to replace windshields, or your roof, you probably would disagree with that, but it's looking at the loss of the actual structure.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Frank, thanks.
All right, thank you.
And do we have a motion on this? How about a motion, then, to approve item 8S?
Okay.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8T, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right? Need a vote? All right. Item is struck. Item 8U, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8U? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Those claims are denied. Item 9, it's claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under item 9? All right, how about a motion?
Thank you.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 10. These are items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Just a comment, Your Honor, and I apologize if I've made too many comments earlier this morning, but one more, and this is on Pete's proposed amendment on notification. I'm concerned that we're adopting an amendment, our ordinances, to deal with a specific situation, and in my brief experience with the council, that always comes back to haunt us. I would just make that cautionary statement before. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Skip?
No.
All right. Mary?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I did want to make note of the fact that our Oklahoma City Skydance Bridge was recognized as one of the nation's top 50 public art projects, and it talked about its iconic structure, and, you know, what it, the kinds of things that it does. They called it exemplary, innovative, you know, just a very exciting project that helps bring the community together, and so I wanted to compliment Stan Carroll and Hans Bootser and the team, and appreciate their kind remarks about working with the city, because it was a project that the city initiated, and very exciting. I did also just want to mention, before Councilman Shadid gets a chance to do it, that there was back-end angle parking on 7th and Hudson over the weekend, and it apparently worked very well. So we're testing it out with baby steps, but I sent some photographs of it, and it seemed to go smoothly. Thank you, City Manager.
All right, David? All right, Pete, why don't we have you go last, because you've got an item, and you've got a couple of Judiciary Committee motions there. Gary, you want to go next? We'll come back this way. All right, Ed?
Just, I would just ask if we could, we had a nationally recognized expert on walkability and complete streets. We spent a significant amount of money bringing him here last week. I thought it was very productive, and I just would ask that we get a report. We had a report on the Hargreaves survey study on Coors Shore. This, I'd like a similar kind of just feedback about what his recommendations were on completing our streets, on walkability. I thought he had good ideas on EK Gaylord. We happened to walk on EK Gaylord right at rush hour, and I was struck by the number of people, this mass of people, that walk through Santa Fe Garage. You see, there's this big structure, and so you wouldn't think people are walking, but pedestrians walking through that, crossing EK Gaylord, and then to get over to the Bricktown Surface Parking Lot. And I'd be curious if we've ever had any accidents there, if any. I mean, they look like sitting ducks, so it was very dramatic. But I'd just like a report on what his findings were to the council. Thanks.
Okay, Larry?
Two things. Thank you, Your Honor. Want to thank the retired firefighters last night for their hospitality to Joan and I at their summer picnic. It was both inspirational, as, again, they brought out the brotherhood that these firefighters have, and how they take care of one another, and then also very instructional, in listening to some of their concerns about their future of their people, and their quality of life. And then this past weekend, we had an example in an old neighborhood of mine, and now is in Councilman Mars's neighborhood. A number of the neighborhood meetings I've been at recently, the police have been there, and they keep emphasizing, please, citizens, if you see something unusual, call 911. And a citizen in Greenville was seated on their porch, they saw some people doing some stuff to a house down the street that was not correct. They called the police, the police came out and actually apprehended the four culprits, and kept the citizens' property that they were lugging out safe. So again, citizens, please heed that. If you see something unusual, call 911. You're a great asset to our police department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
Why don't we just take, if it's okay, just take these items?
Yeah.
And here's the first one, and I appreciate Pat's comment concerning, although this is not the first instance where this happened, this is on this ordinance, this is not the first instance.
This is a notification issue that you're referring to.
Yes. It's happened before, never quite as dramatically as this last one, but the problem is that the, and it really occurs more in my ward than anyplace else, because the city owns so much property in the West Elm Creek Reservation, that when we get ready to change something there, the 1,000-foot requirement is just totally ineffective, because the city owns everything within 5,000 or 6,000 feet, in some situations. So things wind up with virtually no notice. It might be possible, in keeping with what, with Pat's comment and reality, to drop the requirement to 10 property owners, which would reduce it somewhat. But I feel like it's got to include some members of the public, some public ownership, I mean, private ownership. It has to include some private ownership, because otherwise, this situation I've gotten into with this gun range thing is a really bad situation, and it's not a good situation for the neighbors that surround it. And it's, we did everything right, but it just should not have happened that way. And I would entertain reducing that from 15 to 10, because I think 15 may make it really difficult in some situations, but we've just got to have some public, I mean, private ownership interests notified before we do something as dramatic, because we're talking about fairly, well, in the gun range, you're talking about something that has a pretty widespread impact, the sound of the guns going off. So we've got to increase it somewhat. Now, 15 is just a number that was put in the ordinance originally, maybe in my original suggestion. 10 would be satisfactory, because that's still a large number, and it might make it much more workable to have 10 in it rather than 15. But otherwise, I just, I'm, I think it should have happened before. This is not the first occurrence, and the first time it happened before, the use itself was not difficult. Once the use got in, it happened with the First Step, both the First Step facilities, especially the second First Step facility. And the use itself was not really noxious to the neighborhood at all, and so the fuel died down immediately, and I kind of let it go. That's been 20 years ago. But this one, the neighborhood, it did- But this one, the neighborhood, it did have a continuing impact on the neighborhood, and I wish we'd have vetted those things before. We could have moved it. There's no question we could have moved it to another neighborhood, to another area. So, Pat, if you would like to amend it to 10, I'd be, I'd certainly, that's not, that doesn't concern my need to make sure there is some private sector notification on these changes out there.
I think 10's a better solution than 15. The only question I would still have is, how far will you have to go from your target area in some of the areas that you particularly serve?
Right.
To get 10 private owners come into the thing? If some of those people are going to be so far away, they're not going to care.
Yeah, I don't know, but we'd have to go less with 10 than we would with 15, and so that might make, 15 might get a little bit unwieldy for some of the, some of the uses that are more located in the center of that 6,000 acres or so that the city owns out there. So 10, if...
You want to make a motion, Pat, to reduce it to 10?
I'll make a motion then to amend the ordinance as proposed to require only the 10 closest private owners to be notified.
Okay. All right. Let's vote on the amendment. Passed unanimously. Now, are we voting on this today? This is just a public hearing, right? Or is this, this count?
Is this, is this the final?
No, this is a public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 10A?
Okay.
He's shaking his head no, so I guess that's...
It'll be back in in two weeks for the final hearing, is that right?
Two weeks, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. And then item B's been deferred, and then Pete, a couple items from the Judiciary Committee, if you want to make a motion on the...
These are names for reappointment to special judge and appointment of some new special judges, with the exception of one name or all names that were submitted by Judge Manger before he passed away. We're just now getting to that. It had to be done before the first of the fiscal year, so these are really his recommendation with one, one addition was placed on it after that.
Okay. You want to make a motion then on item 10C?
I'd move item 10C.
Checking.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And I'd move item 10D.
Second. Cast your votes.
I have one further comment about judiciary matters. We're going to hold the Judiciary Committee meeting after council meeting, and we have, we met earlier after last council meeting and cut this list from 30 to 9. We had, we talked about trying to reduce the list to five for purposes of today. I personally had some difficulty in getting it below six myself, and so I've asked a few of you if six would be too many for us to interview, if it, not that, it may get cut to five because I'm only one vote in the, out of the three of us, but if, if it'd be all right with everybody, I'd like to not limit it to five. I'd like to, like to be able to do six if we have to. That's still one out of every five people, and we had really, really good applications. We had a really quality group of people. So if no one has any problem with that, we will, we will have a, we'll cut the list as close as we can to five. I would also think that we need to set the interviews fairly quickly because we need to, they're operating shorthanded and have been since Judge Manger passed away, so that is, I'm not sure how we'll schedule that, but I just wanted to get on your radar.
Well, we don't need a backlog in cases, so we probably need to fill it as soon as possible.
Right.
Okay.
So, but I hope the, I hope the Judiciary Committee will come up.
Pat's asking if an executive session after next council meeting is appropriate.
The point would be, the object in my mind would be, look at six applications, create them, throw them out, or whatever, some personal knowledge among the council.
Right.
Go ahead and schedule.
Okay. That's fine.
That'd be Tommy.
That's fine. I mean, that's, we're going to have to do it in executive session anyway, and so I still have a question that I'm not sure that I had answered, and it has to do with what we do, what we are required to do with the names of the people that applied. A lot of people would not want their application to be made public, and it's, we, at this point, we've not had a request or done anything to, to make the list public. It would seem to me that we have the right to keep it public, I mean, keep it private because...
Yes, the applications of people who are not picked are not public records. Those can be kept confidential.
Okay.
And there are a couple of AG's opinions, and I think after rereading those several times, we've determined that you don't have to list the names of the applicants on the agenda, executive session agenda item when you're going to go into an executive session to interview people. So...
Some of the people have, well, most of them have jo, either have jobs or with firms, and so my guess is that not everybody knows they've applied.
If you were... If you were dealing with a current city officer employee, you would either have to identify that person either by name or by position, but with a, just a potential, you do not have to identify them by name.
That's of the shortlist now?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So you just have to identify the position that you're going to go into executive session to, to appoint someone to.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody that has any input, we're going to meet right after council, so anybody that wants to come or wants to talk about anything they've heard, or just tell one, either Ed or David or myself, certainly would, those all things will be taken into consideration as we're trying to cut the, to a shortlist.
City Manager reports?
That's the answer.
And no one signed up to speak? All right. We adjourned.